It is now time, it's 7:01, to start the city council meeting. We welcome everyone out today on March 1st, 2021. We will start with an invocation by council member Kim Riddella, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by council member Brittany Bills.
Our dear and gracious heavenly Father, we're so very grateful that we can be gathered here today and be able to make decisions that affect every single one of us. We're especially grateful for each and every member of our city that they're here today to express their views and help us as city council members be able to make the best decisions. And we are extremely grateful for thy presence in our life and say these things in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
At this time, it will be time for unscheduled public appearances. I'd like you to be aware, if you're here for the item number four, which is the General Plan Amendment on the general plan for 4800 West, that will have a public hearing, so you'll have an opportunity to come up and speak during that time. So this would be the time for unpublic scheduled, uh, public appearances on something not on the agenda. So we'd invite those to come up, please.
Hi.
So feel free to please, anyone that comes up, please state your name, please.
Okay. Hi, my name is Swanee Macon, and I'm grateful to be here and put faces, names to faces. I'm just speaking, I just want to speak for a moment on the proposed rehab center on 11,000 North in Highland. My, my career path and passion is, is helping children in my in-home daycare. Oh, sorry, I thought I heard my name. Is helping people in my, uh, children in my in-home daycare succeed. I've had little three-year-olds reading. I've had parents say, all of my kids until this, when you're teaching, have been in IEP programs. I love these little ones. We do dance and reading and play and healthy food. It's, it's, it's my passion, and it also is what is my means of being able to support my five children alone for the last 18 years I've been running my household. Anyway, the rehab center would be right next door, and so this is my big concern is that the little daycare children need a safe environment. I know rehab centers are important. I know that they provide a very valuable and important, um, life-changing thing. I just know that it's, uh, to me, it feels reckless to have it next door to a daycare, kind of the, um, the same reason why you might not put a pedophile recovery therapy office right next to a grade school playground. It just feels like it's important, but the location is hazardous to the children in my care and therefore is hazardous to my, to my ability to continue to care for and love these little ones. And, um, and also my ability to even stay in my own home if parents withdraw their children from my care and I'm not able to continue to do the good that I am doing. It could cost me my home as well. And so my concern is, I just, I wanted to voice, I know I've sent an email, but I know that, um, that I'm aware of certain rights that, that need to be in place for people who are in those hard situations. I also know that little children deserve to have a safe place, and I've been, and I've been, um, uh, the, the location just seems, um, just seems a little bit reckless next to a daycare. I want to continue blessing and helping children, and I want to be able to continue in my home. And I, I don't know, you know, if the city would say, well, let's put the rehab center right there, and we're willing to compensate you for any loss. We're willing to help you find another location. I just, I think that even all of that is, is unnecessary, that maybe since I've been here and taking care of children, that there would be a safer place for the rehab center.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come up?
My name is Spencer Robison. I don't know how the city council works, but our bishop freaking city or ward council meetings, we typically start out the meeting with a review of the general handbook, become more familiar with the correct details. This evening, I'd like to review this Highland City General Plan specifically on amending the general plan. Uh, per the general plan, amending the general plan. It is envisioned that this general plan will be a vital living document that will serve the community for up to 10 years. In order to stay current and extend the life of the plan to the fullest, interim adjustments will be necessary. It is recommended that no general plan amendments be considered for a period of one year following the date of adaption and providing an adequate period of planning commission and city council to work with the adapted plan without pressure for immediate change. Amending the Highland City General Plan should not be taken lightly. A great deal of effort, time, commitment, and consideration has gone into development of this general plan. And in order to be a trusted document, all amendment proposals should be carefully reviewed and evaluated from the perspective of how it affects the greater community. It is therefore recommended that general plan amendments only be considered semi-annually at special meetings devoted entirely to that process. In this way, the necessary time needed to fully understand and evaluate the amendment proposal is assured, and the general plan is not compromised due to haste or inadequate information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Once again, if you're wondering on the 4800 West, that will be on agenda item, where if those who want to come up can come up during that time, just in, just in case if you want to during the public appearance. Is there anyone else that would like to come up during this time?
Hello, thank you for the time. My name is Lance Miller. I work with the Lone Peak mountain bike team, and I have been unofficially given the responsibility to represent Lone Peak, Sky Ridge, Pleasant Grove, and American Fork teams. I know you're all aware of the issue up at the Hogs Hollow access. I also know that you are working on solutions, and we're very grateful for that. We just wanted to let you know of some time constraints that we're facing. Our practices start June 1st, and June 1st, we're going to have between those four teams about 950 kids practicing every week. And that is the, one of our major practice venues, and so we're going to be forcing our kids to ride on roads that they really shouldn't be riding on. And so I also unofficially offer the help of all four of those teams, uh, some of them know that I'm offering that, but I do, uh, to, if there's a temporary solution or a fast solution, to somehow get access through the Highland City property that is owned at the trailhead, whether it's moving fence, whether it's building a new trail. I know Draper unofficially has said they're willing to grant us access if we can just get to their ground around the Blue Bison ground. Uh, so I just want to, one, make you aware of the issue that's going to become an issue come the 1st of June, when all those teams start practicing, and also offer our help of those 800, 900 kids and their parents, if we can come up with a solution to somehow give us permanent or temporary access to get us through until the solutions that you're working on can be put into place. So, thank you very much.
Lance, thank you. Would you mind, Nathan, would you just raise your hand? Would you mind give all your contact information to Nathan, because when the time comes, we'd love to take you up on your offer.
Absolutely.
So if you wouldn't mind just get with Nathan and giving all that information, so hopefully soon we can come and ask for that help.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Ricky Tomlinson. We just live a couple houses up from Swanee there. I oppose this rehabilitation center because I'm concerned about the safety of my family and others. We really don't know what kind of people they are, especially since there's an old background checks, and I would feel very uncomfortable with my family walking on the sidewalk in front of this center. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say something about the background checks. There's kind of a lot I could say.
Would you mind just stating your name one more time?
Oh, I'm Jane Tomlinson, married to Ricky, and we live two houses east of the proposed rehab center. I'm very, there's a, of course, a lot of concerns. I'm aware of some things about the law, but I wanted to address two things. One of those is the, the plan to not have background checks on the residents for other types of crimes. The applicants, I watched the recording, the applicant said that is not part of their plan. Therefore, they may be allowing individuals with violent and dangerous tendencies to live there and move freely in our community, and we won't even know who is dangerous and who is not. Allowing people with records of violent crimes to dwell in a residential facility is not the same thing as allowing someone with a record to purchase a home or rent a home in Highland. This is to do with the actual nature of how the business operates, not the same thing as buying a home or renting. This is an inherently dangerous business plan that is not essential to running a successful rehab facility. Having safety controls is not the same thing as discriminating. This is a decision related to how the business is run. It's a business practice or policy of the company that could be easily changed, and it does pose a danger to the community which is against city code. I feel like it is not hard to understand that there should be safety controls put in place regarding prior criminal behavior, and that the city should not allow this company to operate without the safety restriction of disallowing residents who have prior violent crimes to dwell in this facility. This would simply be a safety control to make sure the business does not operate as a dangerous business. Licensed home cares in Highland are not allowed to have more than eight children in care at any one time. Before Swanee ran a daycare, I ran a licensed daycare in Highland for eight years. So I was not allowed to have more than eight children in care. How would it be that the city would allow nine adults who've committed violent crimes to be in residence in care there? That's a little inconsistent. Eight children's a problem, nine adult men with violent crimes is not a problem. I got a problem. Okay. My second point is putting Swanee Macon out of business. I propose that if the city goes ahead and allows a drug rehab to go in next door to an existing daycare, that the city make a motion to financially compensate with Swanee Macon for loss of income related to this decision. Also, if Swanee feels that she needs to pursue a different profession due to the city's actions, that she be financially compensated for the time it will take to do that. If Swanee feels, also, if Swanee feels that she wants to pursue her chosen life's profession of early childhood education, and she did used to teach in the public school system, she's a trained educator, that if she feels that relocating becomes necessary in order to continue to pursue her chosen life's profession, that she be financially compensated by the city for the cost of selling her home and moving, also for loss of income from the months it will take to rebuild her business in a different location. I got other things to say, like the math of nine residents plus a live-in, plus visiting owners, plus social workers, and six parking spots. Come on, people. There's more I could say. You're going to hear from the Levis as well. Tracy, another Levy, live three doors east of the proposed rehab. Tracy Levy is a former Salt Lake County sheriff and does have extensive experience dealing with these facilities. He's, it's impossible for him to attend a meeting, but he and Nova are planning to email you. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Doug Courtney, and I'm here to speak about the proposed Title VI changes that are on the agenda later this evening. Totally agree with the need to change the vaccination standards and the disturbing the peace standards. I like getting rid of the hobby license in Utah. I am here to encourage you to actually totally drop the maximum number of cats and dogs in the ordinance. And the reason for that is that I think it's nonsensical. As proposed, it would be perfectly acceptable for someone living in a 1,000-square-foot townhome to have three St. Bernards and three large house cats under the proposed ordinance. Yet it would be beyond the pale for someone living in a 3,000-square-foot detached home on an acre to have four Pomeranians. That makes no sense. Our zoning recognizes that different-sized lots can support different numbers of animals. I, for example, on my property, could keep 14 roosters. But again, those four Pomeranians would be totally beyond the pale and inappropriate based on the proposed ordinance. I simply think that it would be complex enough to put together a maximum number that was not just a blanket across the city, that it would not make sense to, to put that complexity into our municipal code. But without that complexity, I think a blanket prohibition simply makes no sense, and strongly encourage you to take it out of the proposed ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up during the unscheduled public appearance? Okay, at this time, we'll close that. We will then move on to our, on our agenda, we have a presentation by Senator Mike Candy. He will not be here till 7:30-ish, and so we will kind of move on with our other agenda items. So we will move on to agenda item number three, consent items. Is there any consent items? Now, I would like to go ahead, we have consent item number 3C, which is a resolution for the 2022 Mountain Land Pre-disaster Hazardous Mitigation Plan. That will need to be polled because the federal government has not made their comments on that plan yet. And so as we make our motion, if we could just approve number 3A and 3B at the time, unless someone would like to poll either of those items. If no one would like to poll them, go ahead and look them for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve consent items 3A, approval of meeting minutes, and 3B, final plot Featherstone Drive.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Kim, seconded by Scott. Are we ready for a vote? That passes 5 to 0. We, our, our next item is number four, but because Senator Candy will be showing up here shortly, we're going to move past item number four, because we know that will take adequate time. We want to make sure we have adequate time for that item. We will then move on to item number five, which is the architectural approval of Bank of America. I believe this is changing our Taco Bell here in the city to now be in a Bank of America.
Taco Time.
Oh, Taco Time, I'm sorry. Taco Time we had.
Big difference.
Yeah.
Like Taco Time would be offended.
Anyway, our, our Taco Time is now been a, is going to become a Bank of America. Is that you, Kelly, that's going to do the presentation?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Um, all right, so this is a vicinity map, as you're familiar with that Taco Time building that's been empty for a little bit. It's the same property owner, but it's just a new tenant. Is that, should we pause and go to him?
Go ahead, we'll finish this.
Or just keep moving forward.
Is that okay, Mike, before you finish this one item?
Okay.
Okay. Um, a little bit of background, I'm sure you're familiar with the rest of Highland marketplace and how there's that development agreement that was drafted in 2007 or entered into by Highland, the developer, in 2007. And this development agreement did establish a master site plan, architectural themes, landscaping, lighting, signage, et cetera. This is being brought to the council because it, um, it does vary a little bit from those architectural themes that were established, and so we're bringing it to the council separately. It is in the CR zone, and for that, so for approval for an architectural plan, it does go to Planning Commission first for a recommendation, and then it comes to the city council. When it was brought to the Planning Commission on February 22nd, they voted, it was a 5-2 vote, to recommend approval of the proposed architectural plans with the following stipulations. The first three are pretty standard, just making sure that it follows the plans that were dated February 1st, and then that all signage will receive separate sign permits through the city. And then the final building plans will be reviewed and approved by the building official, and then the two that were, um, are unique or added by the Planning Commission were that the Arctic white color on the building be changed to be an earth tone. I'll discuss why in a moment. And that the siding be a non-reflective surface is what the Planning Commission recommended. These are the images in the development agreement for that architectural theme, so you see a lot of earth tones, stonework, stucco, um, mostly like what you see in the existing buildings out there. This is the request. These are the elevations that you see. This is what Planning Commission saw. The proposed materials, it's basically like three different finishes, three different metal finishes, and then some painted stucco colors. You have grays, white, and brown. With the Planning Commission, with the material board, I'm sure you could see in the staff report, it was kind of just tough to see what it would actually look like on a building, and so that's another reason why, um, they made those stipulations clear that they would like to not see white, because their interpretation of an earth tone was that white is not considered an earth tone, and they didn't want to see white in that marketplace. This is an example of the, uh, well, in the material board, that what looks like that wood finish on the metallic, this is an example of the company that will be doing it. And then this is that Arctic white finish. It's this metal finish right here, so you see a couple of other colors, but this is what that white would look like. With, with finishes like these on metals, sometimes when we think metal, we think that it's going to be reflective, and it's going to look like it's aluminum on the side of a wall. But these finishes are intended to make it not look so reflective. And that's, I looked at probably 100 of these buildings to make sure that that was still the case, and it seemed to be. This is just kind of showing the site plan. It's hard to see on the side. But basically, this is just pointing out that with the addition, there's about 400 feet, or 415 additional square feet with this architectural remodel, and with that addition of square feet, they still meet the required parking with requiring four parking stalls per thousand square feet. Oh, yes, that is what it is for CR zone. And then there are no proposed changes for vehicular access nor hours of operation. It will still follow requirements in the municipal code. This is what was in the development code that was kind of iffy on interpretation. This is specific to architectural, um, requirements in the CR zone. So the, this, the design shall include a majority of architectural elements, which are commonly found in other commercial areas in Highland, so not necessarily CR zone, but just commercial areas in Highland. And then it has different examples of what these architectural elements would be, and we are kind of stuck on under building materials, the earth tone colors, and so that's why Planning Commission recommended that. Whereas, as you know, there are the office buildings that are in the C1 zone, that WPI has, that does have white, and then there's kind of more of a bone white in that dentist office that's just east of this area in the RP zone. But we, the, the recommendation is based on the Planning Committee, Planning Commission recommendation. These are the stipulations I just noted earlier. And we just have the two proposed motions. If y'all agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation, that's the first proposed motion that includes all five of those stipulations, and if you're okay, that's why it was a 5-2 vote, is to the Planning Commissioners were okay with the, with those metal finishes and the white color. And so that's the other, that's the alternative motion, is just the first three stipulations rather than including the material and color requirement.
Okay, council, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask something, Kelly. So there's been kind of a trend in commercial development in the city, and you mentioned some of it, going to more of a modern farmhouse look. I guess that's what it's called. I don't know. That's what I call it. But, I mean, Bank of America is one of the largest bank corporations in the world. This is a small building. Are they objecting to have the colors earth tone instead of white? I mean, what is the problem?
No, I... Yeah. They did not object to it. I, I spoke with them after the Planning Commission, Planning Commission meeting, explaining that one of the stipulations that they added was that the white be more, be more of an earth tone, and she was like, that should be fine. The white is just because it's their, what do you call it? Basically, like their company corporate branding. Thank you.
That's their signature color.
Yes, it is. It's their signature. And I, I, I mean, I looked up a few other architectural approvals over the last few years that have just been around the country, and it's basically the same thing. It's kind of like the thing we ran into with Arby's. But it's just something that is their standard. Obviously, you have corporations that change things to be in a city, and they seem amenable towards doing that. It's just whether or not we're going to tell them that they have to.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I'm just leaning towards the alternative motion that, um, you know, white is an earth tone. I think going ahead with the trends and kind of signs of the times, we need to move away from these earth tones, I'll be honest. So I, I, I don't want to make them stick to it.
So this, so what you're mentioning is the Arctic white stained finish not being changed in earth tone?
Yeah.
And the siding, the siding that they proposed not to be changed to the non-reflective surface, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I just did paint my whole entire house white to get rid of the earth tones, so.
In what part of the world is white an earth tone? Arctic Circle?
Guy.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the Highland City Council accept the findings and approve the proposed architectural elevations subject to the five stipulations recommended by the Planning Commission.
Yeah, stick with earth tones.
Is there a second? See, and that motion failed, or is there another motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed architectural elevations subject to the first three stipulations recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll second it. I'll second.
It is, the motion is by Sarah and seconded by Kim. Are we, any other discussion? Are we ready for a vote? That passes four to one. Thank you. We'll now have the great privilege of having our Senator Mike Candy come up and share with us a little bit what's going on in the legislators you have. Now, we appreciate Senator Candy being here. He is the middle of session that ends on Friday, and he's not going to be sleeping probably for a lot of the next couple of days.
No, I won't be, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for having me. And actually, to those that are behind me and those that are in front of me, I'm grateful to see you. We had a town hall on Saturday morning, and seven people showed up. So, so I think if I want to visit with my constituents, I should come to your city council meetings, which is clearly a place where action is happening because this, this must be interesting enough for people to come. And Mayor, thanks for inviting me, and it's a pleasure to be with you. I, I, we're doing a lot up there. The work that you're doing here is equally important to me, and the work that is happening in the homes of these good people behind us is even superior to everything that we're doing. And my effort, my desire is to support you and support our families to make sure that the state government is staying out of your business and making sure that the government, when it does need to be in your business, is doing a good job with that. So I don't know specifically what you want me to talk about. I did, Nathan was very helpful to give me some sense of your interest in certain things. And I'll just start by saying I'm, I'm here to serve you. We're actually not in the middle of the session. It is, it's ending Friday at midnight. And the budget, it's a $25 billion budget. It's being finalized this week. There's, there's still what they call walking money, walking around, which is disturbing to me, which means possibly millions of dollars in the pockets, not really, but in the pockets of some executive appropriations people that if you need $2 million, or $1 million, or $500,000, that you could slide up to somebody and potentially ask for these good people's money to move into your program. I don't like that a whole lot, but that's how the legislature works, and we're getting the budget finalized. I would say for the general report, we're putting over $400 million new dollars into public education. And part of that is deflated by our inflationary trends. All of us can see at the grocery stores, the disturbing trends. They're talking at least 7% inflation, but we think in the West it's up to 10%. So even though we're putting all that new money into public education, which I think is admirable, appropriate place to spend our money, sadly, it is deflated immediately just because of the inflationary trends, which I'll frankly say come from the fact that we've been dumping money on the public as if it was water out of a waterfall. And I'm shocked and dismayed, but that's what happens when you have two years of COVID pandemic spending to promote any number of political causes that people have in their minds. So with that as it is, the, the budget will be settled by midnight this Friday. And what's happening right now for the flow of bills, and I always get disturbed this time of year because the, the proper process is that when I draft a Senate bill, that it needs to be drafted, it's publicized, goes to a Senate committee. And from the Senate committee, if it makes it out, it goes to Senate floor. And if it makes it out of there, then it goes to the House Rules Chamber, where then they decide to put it in a committee. It goes to a House committee, and then goes to the House floor, and then the governor has to sign it. It's a ponderous process. There's 1,000 points of veto. A bill can move or not move depending on who likes it and who doesn't like it. What we did today, and that's for the remainder of the session, we suspend the rules. I, I don't know if the city council suspends the rules for your process, but what that means is that somebody could open a, a bill file last Friday. It's not even hardly looked at by the public. And between Monday, yesterday, and this Friday, it could pass all the way through without any committee hearings. It just goes to the floor of both bodies and, and assigned. So my job between now and midnight is to make sure any potentially stinky bills or shenanigans are not moving past my desk without me scrutinizing them. And that's why I welcome the input of you, as well as my citizens that I strive to represent. So if I could do this, and I, I know, Kim, thank you for joining me at the lunch table along with the mayor with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. You have my cell number, and I thank my partner, Scott Smith. It's always a pleasure. Scott Smith is my doctor partner, and he's one of the best doctors in our group. And you should have my cell number as well. But to make sure the rest of you have my cell number, and also those that are listening online or behind me, it's 385-268-9458. If you've got a, a bill that you're interested in, and you, with your view and perspective, want to share with me the input that you have, I really value that. Because I, with my eyes, ears, and my brain, I try to do my best to scrutinize what comes across my desk, but there's a lot happening. And in fact, I always say there's nothing like a deadline to focus the mind. And sadly, most of the work is actually going to happen between now and Friday as to the budget and also policy. I'll say that one more time. It's 385-268-9458. That's my bill. Or pardon my, yeah, my bills have actually all passed. That's my cell number. So a couple of things I was asked to briefly talk about. I'm really interested in Utah Lake effort. I, I think we should be sensitive to that, even though we're not directly connected to Utah Lake. Obviously, it's so close. We, we all hear about algal blooms occasionally down there. And the Great Salt Lake, we're concerned about that, too. There's $40 million in the budget for the Great Salt Lake, and $30 million coming to Utah Lake, which I think is great. I, it's high time that we try to invest some effort and through the money to implement that effort so that we can actually do something, try to fix the lake in ways that possibly we have neglected over, over years. Most of us are sensitive to the sovereign lands component of this. You may have heard of proposals to dredge, build islands, bridges, and develop multimillion dollar real estate. And those concepts have been discussed. They are not in any bills that are currently being promoted. Representative Brammer from, who's, I think Representative Brammer's outstanding. He is a great servant of the people. He's deeply intelligent. And as a litigating attorney, if you want to take him on with a debate, you may find yourself on the losing side of that process. So I really appreciate working with Representative Brammer, who's actually sponsoring the Utah Lake Authority Bill, which does give provisions for organization and moving forward on Utah Lake priorities, but it does not give away our sovereign lands. In addition to the fact that if there is any decision to allocate lands, there's another bill that would make it under the scrutiny of the legislature and the governor. So I, I feel like we're in a good place, putting money into Utah Lake as well as organizing around the Utah Lake Authority. But I'd love your input if you have any input on that. Somebody asked me about HB 462, which I was checking on the process. I actually haven't, my, my view of the legislature is limited to, I'm Chair of Senate, Health and Human Services. I sit on the Senate Judiciary, Law Enforcement, Criminal Justice Committee, and, and, of course, participating and voting on various budgetary components on social services appropriation. So my view is, is limited to those things. Actually, HB 462, which somebody asked about, which has to do with, with housing authorities and supporting, I've, I've got a brief on that, but that bill is still in the House. It hasn't even come to the Senate. But as I've just reviewed, you suspend the rules, it hasn't been to a Senate committee, and all of a sudden it shows up on my board, and I've just got a few minutes to review and try to figure it out. So I will scrutinize that because this is the week where that sort of thing happens. But if you'd like some more details, I do have a brief that Utah League of Cities and Towns developed for that. But there is some money dedicated to housing authority, making sure that we have capacity for development of low-income housing. But I, one of the things that I heard from Nathan is you and I, we should all be sensitive to mandates, unfunded mandates that come from the state government to you. And I'm sensitive to that, as well as federal mandates that come to the state. I'm sick and tired of mandates. In fact, today, one of the big bills that I've been working on is vaccine mandates and passport mandates. I'm, I'm integrated in that. I think it's important. There's a big kerfuffle today in the Senate committee that, that HB 60 was heard. And, and anyway, so mandates offend me. I think most of the time Highland City and its city council and mayor can make good decisions. People can make decisions for themselves. And when government, particularly the President of the United States, steps into telling you what you should do for taking medicines or not, I find that to be patriarchally ridiculous and offensive. I, I think people can make these kind of decisions themselves when it comes to vaccines and things like that. So I, there's a lot more to say, and I'm happy to kind of give you more if you want. But I'd be more interested in your questions if you have any.
So you brought up the HB, is it HB 462?
Uh huh.
Which the, it's affordable housing land you spill.
Yes.
And I don't know what the other, you know, you, we, I've not tried to reach out to you. When we went to lunch, you said, hey, only try to get a hold of the things you're real passionate about. And you probably know it's been very, you haven't gotten very many texts.
No, I've been surprised. Apparently, things are going really well up there.
Well, it's, or we look at, it doesn't affect our city. One of the things you recommend is going, hey, when you're saying about billboards, Highland has no billboards, so don't try to reach out to me about a billboard issue. So I think we've been trying to be sensitive, going, we get it. It's not our wheelhouse. Don't try to jump in the wheelhouse. And so been sensitive that way. On, on this one, as we look at the land use, my understanding, and if someone else, you know, could maybe help, and Nathan, I know we've been trying to follow this, it, it, it will not affect us probably as what they're saying about density. Because one of the concerns was is about saying, hey, there's going to be a certain number of density units, you know, throughout the whole city, where it appears that it is more around transit-oriented centers where front runner or tracks, or where there's four, you know, UDOT, or the, the transit's coming together. The where area that might affect us is it's talking about accessory dwelling units. That in Highland right now, to have, let's assume you have a garage, and you've put an apartment above the garage. Right now, you have to have the same roof line attached to the home to have an accessory dwelling unit. This one would, this new bill would say, hey, you can go and build a detached garage or even a little casita in the back, and you could make that a rental unit. And so that's one thing that, you know, that could have an effect up on Highland. You know, and, and the council could kind of chime, chime in if that was a concern on some. The other thing is the affordable housing component of it. I think they said we need to go and look in our general plan. You know, we, a lot of these are here because we're looking at some things in our general plan tonight about that we have to go and put in a moderate income housing. And, and one of the concerns we have is, you know, here we go, you know, we, we've done some different density here in our town center. We've done some over by the high school. But every time we think we're doing something to maybe help with some housing cost, it still just comes out exorbitantly high. And I'm going, okay, I don't know what we can do to help, you know, and like, but we're going to be mandated to do something, but it seems anything we do doesn't do it.
Right. Thank you. And, and if, as this bill in its current form comes along, and you have concerns with the kind of manipulation it might make of Highland City, I'm sensitive to that and want your considerations sent to me. So please text me. And General Britton has been in touch with me before. As far as just, I am so-and-so from your area, Highland, and I do, I like or don't like. Call me if you have any questions. I love that kind of input. Frankly, the bill hasn't come to me yet, so I haven't had to scrutinize it. But, so let me ask, in its current form, Mayor, is it something that you can tolerate? Or is it something you would rather me vote no?
Counsel, what's your feedback or feeling, before I just voice my opinion? Has anyone had an opportunity to kind of follow? That's that big land use we've been trying to follow. It, it didn't get presented till late, late in the thing. Like you mentioned, one of the hard things is we were trying to get ahead of it. You know, the league's been following this bill for, I think, since the summer. And we've all been nervous about it, and every time we get together, it's still not all the way finalized, so we don't know exactly what's coming at us.
You sound like me describing, especially in the next few days, the legislative session. And, and a bill is what it is, and then somebody amends it, somebody substitutes it, and you thought it was gone, and then somebody brings it back. And right now, what the House does, so on the Senate side where I'm at, is the House wipes the board, meaning they take all the bills off that have just lined up in sequence, and then they send over packets of bills that a bill may not even have, it may not even had a committee hearing, and they send it over. So I'm, I'm sensitive to that. I'm watching this. And when it comes to, I don't have time to read a bill. It's a no. I just, that's, if you're not going to give me any time to read it, I'll just vote no. Second, if my constituents are concerned, then I'm concerned. Because many of these things, I, I'm not going to necessarily have a, it's, it's not good versus evil, right? There, there's, there are some moral issues. There are some deeply political issues that, if you want to talk about abortion or gun rights, these are, these are things that most of us have thought about. When, when you're talking about, should we put $50 million into this for this reason or not? Is it going to make any difference, or is it a waste of the taxpayers' dollars? That, that's the kind of thing that's, it, it's important, but it's not good versus evil. And so your input would make a big difference to me. And I'm more than happy to, if, if I get one or two or three of you decent people who I respect and want to work with that says this is a bad bill, then I'm a no. I, unless I have a strong reason otherwise, then I'll communicate that to you.
Any concerns about, this is specifically about HB 462 on the affordable housing?
I agree with you, Mayor.
Agree is what? What was my opinion on it?
Well, no, I, I would prefer that you let us as a municipality make our rules about affordable housing. Affordable housing looks very different in Highland and Alpine than it does in, in other cities.
Downtown Perrigo, that's true.
It's, it's different. So I guess that's not your opinion necessarily. That's my opinion, Mayor.
Well, no, but I, I would, I, I would share in, you know, if you're asking, I share with what, what Britney's bringing. You know, it's hard for us to try to do anything affordable. You know, you know, we, we have some townhomes, you know, they're coming in at 600, 700,000 and going, what do we do?
Ridiculous, isn't it?
And so, so that, that's the only concern, is if that was in the bill that we had to have that, I don't know how we go about doing it.
And I, that goes back to mandates, and I do find that as a policy consideration, as has to be. Well, I'll just say generally, I don't support mandates. I can't think of a mandate that I'm going to support. And, and that goes for the state onto the city, or in this, in most of the cases, we have mandates, especially in healthcare where Scott and I work routinely, is from the federal government to the, to the professionals in that case. But, so be in touch. There, there is a lot going on. And actually, that goes for the citizens that are behind me, is if, if you have input on any bills, I'd like to take it. Somebody did ask about mail-in ballots. There, there was a bill to modify or adjust that, and that bill died in committee. That, that's why there can be some fear or concern about a particular bill, and it doesn't even get past stage one. I mean, there, there's multiple stages. So, so any termination of mail-in balloting is dead. And as is, there was a bill on ranked choice voting, and that bill died as well. So many of these things die without me even having to look at them.
Can I ask a follow-up on that, though? I, that has died for this year, but my guess is that it will come back because it seems to.
One?
Ranked choice voting, I'm guessing.
Maybe. I, I don't know who's pushing that sort of thing.
I think there's a pretty large group pushing it. I guess, what is your opinion on that generally? I think we found with mail-in voting, it was actually a fairly large unfunded mandate when, because we had to contract with the county to do our, our voting, which I think is the most important thing that we do as a, as a government, is run elections. So I guess I'm interested in knowing what your thoughts are about ranked choice voting generally and about where those rules should be made. Because I think it's better to talk to you now about what might come up next session than when you're the last weekend, and...
Sure. Ranked choice voting, if you're talking to mail-in ballot, and there are multiple candidates on the ballot, the, the interesting dynamic of, first, I'm, I'm a fan of in-person voting. I, I think there's something magical and useful about people getting together. I know it's, it's easier to just sit at home in the comfort of your own home and, and check boxes and maybe put 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on whatever. First, there's not a lot of multi-candidate races, so that's, as to ranked choice voting. Second, the interesting thing about ranked choice voting to me is that if I'm in a large group, as I've, I think we've all done, we've just recently moved to mail-in balloting, and also the ranked choice voting is fairly new to me, is, so a large group, multiple candidates, let's say there's three, and, well, let's say there's five. That's, that's usually easier. And so you put your numbers 1 through 5 on there, and you put it in, and it's just calculated without you making any further calculations. Reality for me with the first ballot, between the first and the second ballot, is somebody drops out. And at that point, you and your pals, everybody gets together and says, well, all right, this is what we're left with. And I recalculate. I, I don't know what you do with your ballots in that case. But it's, it's really interesting to integrate and, and try to figure out how to do that in between the second and the third ballot. There's more calculations as to who's left and what do you want to do with that. So I think that's great. I really like that. And actually, the candidates, what if between ballot 1 and 2, somebody drops out, and then they speak again? And you have a chance to address any concerns or, anyways. That is, I think, a great part of our electoral process. And with ranked choice voting, you have one shot, and you just lay all those candidates out in a priority that you think is right, but then as somebody drops out, you rethink, and you think, well, now I'm left with these candidates, neither of which I really support, but I kind of support that one over the other one. But you can't make any adjustments on your ranked choice vote. So, so I know there's, there are many proponents of ranked choice voting for efficiency. And trust me, I've sat in lots of meetings where I was the one waiting for the ballot. And if, if you sweat while you're a voter, you particularly sweat while you're an elected official waiting for those votes to come through. But I, I think voting is important enough for us to take time. If we want to be efficient, we could just make a king or a queen and have them do everything and not do all this voting process. But that's not, that kind of efficiency at the expense of the public's input, I think, is, is foolishness for most of us. So, so with that, I'm not a great fan of ranked choice voting would. Well, so if Highland City or Utah County wants to do ranked choice voting, I think that's something that you can be accountable for if you want to move that forward. But I don't think for the state to force that on the city or on the county is appropriate.
Can I make a comment, Senator? Just commenting on some of the things that have been said, I, I agree with many of the things you've said, or most of them. And, and when we're talking about HB 462... things you've said, or most of them, and, and when we're talking about HB 462 and that, as a local elected official, we have a population here in Highland now of about 21,000 people, and we go through the electoral process, which takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, and, and sometimes a fair amount of money to get elected. Then we get here on the city council, and we're constantly being told by our city attorney, when he looks at the state laws and different things, I mean, you're told, well, you can't do this, you can't do that, you really can't represent the people that elect you, because you have this state mandate, and you have this state rule, and you have this state law and different things. And it seems like the legislature, even though it's a conservative legislature, has been putting out a lot of changes, that we've had to go back and redo our development code time and again. And, and it's kind of frustrating, because it's frustrating for the staff, they come bring it to us, and so we have to amend it. So it's kind of like, in many ways, the state legislature, and certainly the federal government, is taking away the ability of city councils to manage their cities, because we're constantly being told, well, you can't do that, you can't do what the citizens want to do, because you have to do what the federal government tells you to do. And so that's kind of a philosophical thing. I'm opposed to HB 462, because I think it's going to be used by development people, and I have good friends that are developers, but we're always under pressure as a city to put in more and more and more high-density housing. So what does that result in? It results in packed schools, packed roads, we're going to talk about road issues tonight, and all these things. So there's all these consequences that come from that. And so my feeling is, is let us, as city council, do our jobs.
Agreed.
Instead of tying our hands behind our back. And the legislature does this stuff, and doesn't think about the consequences in many cases. Ranked choice voting, I'm totally opposed to it. I, I did ranked choice voting on the county level, we had 14 candidates, I mean, how can you learn anything about 14 candidates, and then rank them 14 ways? I, you know, I, I hope you never vote for ranked choice voting.
Thank you for that input. And actually, I'll, I'll mention, these, these bills that foist upon you do exactly what the intent is. My point behind this is, there are many entities out there that would like a United State of America, meaning one massive state. And at the center of that state is a place called Washington DC, and when I go as a vendor of whatever, let's say a computer program for a school, I go to the Department of Education, and I sell to Washington DC, and from there, it's foisted upon the entire nation. That's way easier to sell that way, and it goes the same for the state. Guess who, guess who drafts a lot of these bills? Utah League of Cities and Towns should be an advocate for you, and should be an advocate for the citizens, and I think they are. The, the drafter of bills that are going to tell you what you should do for affordable housing, who might those people be? And it accomplishes just the goal that they want, is it may be a bunch of real estate developers who want X, Y, and Z, because they can make way more money making high-density housing than they could buy one-acre lot sort of places. So, so the question, Scott, and it's an important question, is, does it accomplish the goal? And, and you and I would say, no, but if I was a developer, maybe, I'd say, absolutely it does, because if I'm changing your code, and it's benefiting me financially, which is where, I'll just say, I'm not a developer. I don't, I know a lot about healthcare, that's, that's what I do, and I'm good at that, but it's one of those things that, if you have any understanding, view, opinion on this sort of thing, it's going to help me to understand, because buried deep in a 50-page bill might be some apparently innocuous change that turns into some piggy bank for a special interest. So, so I'm sensitive to that, I'm not going to pretend to know every detail of the things that I do, I read all the bills, but some of them may seem innocuous when in fact they're not. And so, so I appreciate that. If, if you're concerned about HB 462, I'll vote no on it. I don't even know, frankly, I'll see it. It may not even come, come over to the Senate side.
So, so you brought up 462, you know, one of the things, here's some surprising information we found out, our census shows that in Highland, 21% of the residents are renters.
Interesting.
21%.
What was that, five or 10 years ago?
I don't know, do we know what it was in the last census? So, I mean, that, that's.
It's changing. I, I know, I feel it, our area is changing.
But I'm sure that that has to be something with affordable, where we have several, they're in a, you know, in a, in a basement with an apartment, you know, just looking at some things, we have some that are renting homes. One of the concerns that Councilmember Smith brought up was, if we do this casita type of thing in the back, you could put someone upstairs and downstairs in that backyard, plus you have another basement, you could have a fourplex on a unit.
And no parking.
Well, no, and so we didn't require, you only required the one, you didn't have the requirements in there for the parking. We don't have our roads designed for it, we didn't have our utilities designed for it.
And our schools.
And so by the mandate, we didn't have the time to plan. And that, that was probably, so I'd probably say no on that, that bill, just, it, I understand the concept to try to help us get the housing correct, but it, we didn't, weren't able to evaluate what the effect would be on, on the system as we put about, put that in place.
Totally get it. And the other thing, and I, my next question in, in this, and I don't want to get too deep into the bill, I haven't even read it in detail, I've just got a brief on it, my question back is, if you're going to vote no, have you read it? And the answer is, I'll bet you haven't read it either, which, that's fine, I totally get that. But I would like you to do an analysis that way. When I vote, I try to be thoughtful about my votes, and have it read through, and take an input on those sort of things.
Fine.
So if you give me instructions that it's a no vote for a good reason, I'd, I'd like you to have been very careful as to your analysis of that, and have a good reason for it, because I see $50 million in that bill to help promote this process, like, okay, a $50 million grant to help you in accomplishing some of those goals, is that worth it? I don't know. It, it kind of depends on where you come down on that. But, but now, I mean, start reading these bills, and they're terrible to read, certainly not entertaining by any stretch. So do your best to analyze that, and send me your conclusive, conclusive report on that, I'd love it. But as I suggest, I'm more than happy to carry your will on that bill, or other bills, because many of these, how it impacts you is all that matters to me.
You know, the other bill that I think's a great bill, it's going to be hard for the city to implement, is the second, it's HB 242 about the secondary metering.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we're, you know, we, we are trying to, I know Alpine has meters all in, you know, Highland, we've now kind of put a plan, but we figured it's going to take us about seven years to get all the meters in all the homes, and some of that was funding. The nice thing is, this bill has funding part of it, where our concern would be, is it's saying that there's only funding, and you have to be done in two years.
Hmm.
And if everyone goes out and has to buy meters, I was, I was joking, that Highland should go and buy every meter they can in corner of the market, and maybe, and we could become a distributor, but, but that would be our concern, is I don't know if we can get it done in that time with every other city in the state trying to do that.
That bill also hasn't come across my desk, but is it, is it a grant that you could take for at least some, and you're moving in the direction, you could accomplish some in two years? I don't know. And actually, that's the flexibility of some of these programs. I'll also say that Councilman Smith is, bills can be passed, and laws can be executed, but they can be changed as well. And if you find things, that's, I'm always open to that, frankly, on judiciary, we're constantly, there are, there are special interest groups that are constantly looking for flaws in our judicial system, and trying to make those better. So, so if you find failures, like, I'm sick and tired of this mandate, Senator Kennedy, you need to fix this, I will look into that, and I'll do my best to promote those things.
Well, and I think the problem with the meters is, is we may not be able to get them. So I think before the state legislature mandates, you got to do it in two years if we give you this funding.
Right.
They better go out and make sure they're available, because there's supply chain problems.
Sure.
They're all made in the Ukraine.
Oh, yeah. Tragedy over there.
Well, no, we've had supply chains, I think we were trying to do 400 meters this last summer, and we didn't get them until the fall. I mean, we ordered them in the spring, and from what I remember, we didn't get them until later in the season, so I'm going, you know, we're only taking 400. Well, now we have to go with this, if we do that in two years, we're going to have to try to get 2,500 each year in, and just, that was, it's not that, I, hey, thank you for the funding, thank you for the, just, maybe if we can get applied and get the grant, and, and kind of just have it keep applying so we can get it done, so.
Excellent point, thank you. And in fact, when we had, so inducements, to me, are different than mandates, and I'm a fan of, look, if we think, meaning the state government thinks something's important, we should put some money behind it. Although, remember, all that money comes from all of us, and it's, is this the best use of our money? The, the point I'll make on that is water preservation, is there anything more important? Air, air quality is important as well, but, but we need to make sure that we're doing our best there. Does this accomplish that? I'm not sure. But if we're going to promote something and induce it, we should pay for it and not mandate it.
No, and there is, there's money in the bill to help us with that. Is it 70% in the first two years, then it drops?
Interesting.
And so if you were anticipating, and you couldn't get it done, I think that's what Councilmember Smith.
But Mayor, isn't it a mandate in that it's done by 2030? It's just that, so it is a mandate, it's just that we have until 2030 to do it, and the percentage that we're reimbursed decreases each year.
Yeah, interesting.
So it is a mandate.
But you could choose, you could choose to participate or not.
Yeah, you're correct.
We can choose to participate in the metering program. The metering program is a mandate that we will meter by 2030. Am I wrong about that?
Oh, it is, it's 2030. We have to have.
So it's a, it's a mandate, and if you, whatever you can do by 2024, I think it is, will be reimbursed at 100%, and then 2026 goes.
70% be reimbursed at 70%.
And then it goes down each year, but it is mandated that everybody will be metered by 2030.
To be clear, that mandate's already been passed, and that's already in law, or is that part of 232?
It's been passed.
I think, that was a question, I thought it was already passed in a bill, I think, last year.
Maybe some of our helpers over there, and I, I'm not sure either.
And the ARPA money is there for the two years.
Yeah, and ARPA money's helpful, although it's, it's transitory.
Anyway, as you can see, we're concerned about water.
Thank you.
We're concerned about our density, about how we're going to work within our roads and our, our infrastructure, it's our infrastructure, you know, it's your infrastructure, is that.
Absolutely.
But we're just trying to figure out how the infrastructure works within the city.
Well, the, the free flow of information's really valuable to me, and I appreciate you inviting me, and in fact, John Valentine used to be in the seat, he was outstanding, I think, and, and Mayor Fugel in Pleasant Grove said to me, you know, Mike, if you really want to do good, is do like John Valentine, you don't need to schedule an appointment to come to Pleasant Grove City Council, you just wander in when we're open, and we'll have you, and we'll talk to you, and we'll. So I intend to do that, we all, I have a day job, we all have stuff to do, I, I do want to be in touch, I have certain limits to my capacity to do that, but this kind of contact is invaluable for me to represent you well, and thank you for the invitation. Mayor, did you have other things you wanted to talk about before you just?
No, I think this was a matter of time.
I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Okay.
Is the Hope, or, greetings, Senator.
Hi.
Is the Hope Scholarship Bill dead this time?
It's dead.
This session?
Yes.
Were you, in its current form, were you for it or against it?
I, I didn't even read it.
Didn't read it?
So it didn't even make it out of the House.
I, I was reading some of the objections, and perhaps they seem valid, but it seems like the only way to improve education in traditionally or historically disadvantaged communities would be to pass something like this. Anytime you involve the federal government, I think you perhaps shall agree, you'll get a bloated, lethargic bureaucracy. That wastes money. And when you bring it down to, because you mentioned having the efficiency theoretically would be to have a Department of Education in Washington as opposed to local control. But with local control, it addresses, as you know, local needs.
Yeah.
And our needs are much different than those in California or Massachusetts, where it's kooky. And I can say that, because I'm from California, so. I just think, I would encourage you, as our representative, to possibly champion this, maybe in, in future sessions, address the concerns of those who were against it, and bring about something like this.
Interesting point, thanks, Tim. And I don't know what to say about that, because the right and the left hated the Hope Scholarship. I didn't find anybody that liked it. I was shocked, I thought somebody would like it. And it's hard when nobody likes a bill to consider a policy in that direction. The other thing, Brittany and I have had conversations along these lines, is, you know who can fix education? Parents and teachers. I, we're all on the same page, I think, we, we want children to do well, and I don't think the state government is a great place to accomplish those goals. In fact, one of the proposals that I've had is, how do we encourage parents to actually be in the classroom? This off the top of my head, I've been thinking about it for about six weeks, but, and I need to vet it with my public school folks, the local school board, but how about we pay a teacher $75 for a half-day if a parent's in the classroom for a half-day, and give the parent $25, and, and let the parent kind of be in the classroom with their child? And I, I just think, if, if we've got school issues, we need parents to show up and be a part of the school process. And I think many times they do, but anybody that complains about the schools, my first question is, when was the last time you were in the schools to help?
I agree, and there was an interesting study conducted, and the most successful students came from families who considered the primary responsibility to be that of the family.
Yeah, interesting.
The least successful families were those who put the entire responsibility on the schools. And then it was gradient between the, the two extremes. So I completely agree.
Yeah, that, fascinating. Let's keep that conversation going as well. I'm not a big fan of education bills, though, I, I just think, actually, anytime you open education bills, there's always a, a nuclear bomb of resistance from, from teachers who claim that you're persecuting them, et cetera. So, so, yeah, I think the state legislature's job is to fund education, but not to direct or dictate, although people disagree.
I will have to say, my demographics, that I'm surrounded by is moms and kids here in Highland, and I kind of put my feelers out of, what are some things that you're interested in?
Good.
Full-day kindergarten was one that was a disappointment, that all the funds weren't appropriated for that, but I'm excited that it's still moving forward. And then you and I have talked about appropriating more money towards the mental health crisis of our kids, especially due to the pandemic, and so that's something that we really want to focus on, is what we can do now to help that mental health of our kids.
Very good, thanks. I've got three bills that I'm working on with that, and they've all passed, so I think we're moving in the right direction. All-day kindergarten, I'm conflicted. I was talking to a PTA person who was just on a tour of the Capitol. Mayor, I'm sorry to take your time, but I think this is important, is when the government moves in, everybody moves out. Meaning, when the government builds a local swimming pool, somebody that was going, or a gym, let's just say, an actual fitness center, then the commercial entity that was going to do that moves out. And I guess my question is, some children probably would do better with all-day kindergarten, actually, we all would agree, there are some children that need that. But there are some children who actually could free spirit, run around, kind of do whatever they want, and the question is, what about starting school at four years old, three years old, two years old? At some point, all of us would draw a line and say, this is ridiculous, like, no, the parents and the child, they should stay home, but there are some parents that they probably don't do so great with even a two-year-old. But when all-day kindergarten moves in, and if it's a pilot program, a grant process, I think we all know that within five years, every child will be in all-day kindergarten. And I, I liked half-day kindergarten as a kid, just my own perspective. I like walking around and kind of not having to sit in a chair and have somebody tell me what to learn through the day. So I'm conflicted on that, because the government is a pretty terrible parent.
Well, I think I like the option that was still optional, but it gave the option to, to be able to have an option for anyone that wanted it to be an option.
I suspect most people over time will take that option because it's easier to send your children to school than it is to, to take care of them at home. But, but anyway, I don't, I don't know, and I've had a lot of advocates for that. So, and it's, it just passed the Senate. So I, I think it's going to pass.
I think the budget was slashed 48 million to 12 million. So it's one of those things that can't be rolled out.
Yeah, it's still a lot of money, and that's another piece is how much do we want to spend on putting kids in, in school instead of letting them run around and just be kids? So, yeah, I'm sensitive to that, but thanks for that input, Kim.
Well, thank you. If it's okay, Senator Kenny, I was going to ask our public safety, our police chief and fire chief, is there any bills that, you know, that they might be aware of? Because I know this year, there's been a lot of bills going through about public safety. Is there anything you'd like to address to the center?
And when I cross the chief, he, he lets me know. I, yeah, I appreciate that input, chief. I, I do need, I need your input. The one that, that has been a struggle is the retirement one, yeah. And it's, I'm pretty sure made out of the House, and the Senate just does not want to have anything to do with that. Anyways, long story there, but. Yeah, it's, and what we were talking about in Senate caucus is, if you need more money, how do we just give you? I mean, if, if people, so people can retire and then come back at their pension and they're, they're 150% instead of 100% of the salary. I just said to the Senate caucus is, if they need this, let's stop using the retirement system to raise their salaries. Let's just raise their salaries. And then another senator said, well, we can't do that except for the Utah Highway Patrol. And I said, well, we can make grants or help them with funding of equipment, and they could not have spent it on equipment, they could spend it on salaries. So, and we do have a crisis with our police officers, with the, the defund the police and all that sort of ridiculousness around the country. Thankfully, I think our citizenry support you, and I certainly do as well. But the, the other, we hear the camel's nose under the tent up there all the time, and teachers, there's a crisis in teachers. Mental health providers, there's a crisis in them. And the senators were adamant that as soon as we open the door to one, we open to everybody. And, and then we're back to where we were in 2009, 2009, when Dan Lillenquist was trying to make this reform. So it's, it's difficult, but I, any chance I can get to put more money into law enforcement, I'll do it. And I hope so. There's, there's got to be a better way to do this than use the retirement system to raise the salaries, but, yeah. Actually, Chief and I regularly communicate.
And we appreciate, you know, I know Chief Williams has been pretty involved with a lot of the different bills going up there. We appreciate.
Thanks for that, too.
You know, tonight is, like I said, I know this is a busy time for you, so thank you for coming. Thank you for listening and, and being our representative. I think all of us feel, at least I really appreciate you. You've always been very open to listening, and so thank you for that.
Pleasure. And be in touch, use my cell number as you wish. It's campaign season, and hopefully I'll see you again along the campaign trail. Thanks for having me.
And thank you to your wife and your family. It's a big sacrifice for them also.
I was going to say, and thank you for all you do and your families supporting you in the work that you do. Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Okay. We will now move on to item number four, which we will have a public hearing on. And then we're going to be doing, it's a general plan amendment to the transportation elements of the general plan. So at this time, we'll turn some time over to, is it, is it Kelly or Andy that's going to?
I'm going to start it out.
Okay, so go ahead and give us some information.
Okay, there are going to be a couple of us talking about this because I do definitely do not know everything. Okay, so this is a proposed amendment by staff to amend the transportation element of the general plan. Just going over really quickly, in the Utah State Code, it's a requirement to have a transportation element in our general plan. The general plan is something that we try to update every 10 years or so. Our current general plan, the last time it had an overall update was in 2008. As we, over the years, we've had a couple of, we call them minor amendments, where we do things like this, where we have public hearings. It goes to Planning Commission, City Council, and we try to update as time goes on. We're working on a comprehensive update over the next year or two to try to update the whole thing. As we know, the city has grown and changed over the years, but as of right now, we're just kind of trying to address things little by little until we get to that point. So in, in the Utah State Code, here's a quote really quick, just saying that each municipality shall prepare and adopt a comprehensive, long-range general plan. That's what I just explained. And the purposes are to plan for present and future needs of the municipality as well as growth and development of all or any part of the land within the municipality. And then there's also just a few sections after, as a quote, saying after the legislative body has adopted a general plan, no street, et cetera. There are a lot of different things that are listed. May be constructed or authorized until and unless it conforms to the current general plan. And so that's what we're addressing right now, is an amendment to the general plan to allow the city the ability to potentially widen 4800 West, which is where I come to in the general plan, along with, we have a transportation master plan, which that's what most of y'all saw on the back of the letter that was sent. That has, let me just show it real quick. This is the overall map of the transportation network. And so you have five-lane arterials, three-lane collectors, and then just like local roads. And so this is kind of, this is showing the cross-sections in the general plan. This is, keep in mind, this is a general plan. That's why it's called general plan. We're planning for the future. And so these are the basic right-of-way cross-sections, which shows basically it's back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk walk on each side of the right-of-way. Three-lane major collector, this is, in the general plan, is a 74-foot right-of-way. Five-lane arterial is planned to be 106 feet of right-of-way. And so this is the change currently in our general plan. All of North County Boulevard is identified as, at the time, a proposed five-lane arterial. Obviously, y'all know that in the past, it did have to be widened, and it was. And then currently, this has it, our current general plan has everything north of SR92 as an existing three-lane collector. And so the proposed amendment is to update that to be a five-lane, five-lane arterial. The purpose for this proposal, or this proposed amendment, was brought by a study that was done. It was commissioned by five entities, essentially. It was MAG, Mountain Land Associations of Governments, UDOT, which is the Utah Department of Transportation, as well as the cities of Lehigh, Alpine, and, and Highland. And so we actually have Ivan Hooper, who's with Avenue Consultants, that's who MAG hired to do, write this study. He is present. I'm actually going to turn it over to him to kind of go over the purpose of the study and what findings came from it.
Good evening. Yes, a pleasure to be here with you all. As Kelly mentioned, my name is Ivan Hooper. I work for Avenue Consultants. We were the consultant firm hired by UDOT and MAG to perform the study. The study began in summer of 2020, at the, kind of the, the height of COVID. As with, and the purpose of the study was to really look at SR92, the east end, you know, from about Lehigh Center Street to the mouth of the canyon. Look at the intersections there, what improvements might be needed there to accommodate 2050 traffic demands, as well as to look at potential connections to improve overall connectivity and circulation on the north side of, of SR92. The study began with, with an analysis of existing traffic conditions, which involved collecting traffic counts, preparing traffic models, and, and analyzing those existing conditions. From there, we used the MAG regional travel model, which is used to project future traffic volumes based on land use, future land use projections, and future transportation system plans. And so that model was used to, to estimate 2050 traffic volumes under a couple of scenarios. One was with a few of the, the connections that were analyzed. Specifically, we, we looked at an extension of, of 11,800 north, kind of along the north side of the, I guess it's Texas Instruments property now, connecting in back to 92 on, on the, the west side of the property. Looked at some connections in the Long Drive, Ranch Drive area that would just better connect the, the local street network. And then also looked at extending High Bench Road from the north down to intersect SR92 as well. So those were connections that were looked at in, in the traffic analysis. I think the one, the connection from a, I guess congestion relief standpoint, SR92, that provided the most value was the High Bench Road. Our projections for 2050 were that that road would carry approximately 5,000 vehicles per day and would relieve or would reduce peak hour intersection volumes at North County Boulevard and SR92 by about 2%. So a relatively minor effect at the intersection level. Yeah, and that's largely because, well, some movements would go down, such as, you know, north-south traffic on, on North County Boulevard. Other movements went up, such as east-west traffic on SR92 for people going over to, to the new intersection. So all said and done, relatively minor benefit was shown at the North County Boulevard intersection with SR92. So with these future 2050 projections, we looked at, at each of the, the major intersections along the corridor, going from 6,000 West to, to Canyon Road. And looked at, one, generally speaking, all of them were projected, or were projected to fail by 2050. And by failing in traffic engineering terms, we, we talk in terms of, of level of service, A through F, with A through D generally being acceptable, and E and F being unacceptable. And so, and that, those are based on, for signalized intersections, that's based on the average delay at the intersection experienced by all vehicles. Over 55 seconds per vehicle, it would be a level service E, which is, like I mentioned, is generally considered unacceptable. And so we found that all of these intersections, under their current configurations, would be in that failure mode by 2050 with, with no modifications. We looked at potential improvements at, at every one of those intersections. At most of them, the ones on, particularly on the western end of the corridor, we found that largely just putting in an extra through lane on SR92, you know, that currently drops around Highland Drive, extending that farther to the, to the east would mitigate most of those problems. However, particularly at 5,300 West, or SR74, Alpine Highway, a lot of names, and at 4,800 West, which is North County Boulevard, SR129, those two intersections would need more than just an extra through lane. Those locations, we analyzed several different potential solutions. Generally, adding additional turn lanes, so putting in dual-left turn lanes, putting in exclusive right turn lanes, adding extra through lanes. So we looked at a number of potential improvements at each of those intersections. And with the study team recommended specific improvements at the, at those locations, which at, at both locations did involve dual, or having two north-south through lanes, which is, I guess particularly relevant to, to what came next. So as we had said, particularly, you know, the topic of conversation at 4,800 West, that we would need two north-south through lanes, we were asked to look a little bit more closely at just general north-south travel from 92 up, up into Alpine area. And in particular, we saw that the demand, there was sufficient traffic demand to justify widening of one of the two major roads there. And so looking at, at the traffic volumes that were, we had projected, and looking at the overall connectivity of each of, the, the two roads being Alpine Highway and North County Boulevard, this, we recommended that 4,800 West, North County Boulevard be the road that was widened to four lanes. And that was because in our, in our future projections, without widening either road, treating them equally, we still projected about 70% higher volumes on North County, or I don't even know what to call this road. I'm going to bounce all over the place. I apologize for that. But on North County Boulevard, we were showing 70% higher volumes than on Alpine Highway. So we had higher volumes, and then we also felt like it, it had better connectivity to the regional system. You know, North County Boulevard is already a five-lane road. It provides pretty good access to I-15 and to other regional facilities. So that was the basis for the recommendation, that, that that be the road that, that would be recommended to be widened in the future. When we got to that point, there was a desire from the study team to look more closely at what that would, what that would look like. That wasn't part of the original intent of the project, but the study partners all agreed that would be beneficial. So we then began an exercise, a concept design exercise, to look at what it would take to put a five-lane road, or to widen 4,800 West and Canyon Crest Road to, to a, to be a five-lane road with two travel lanes in each direction and a center two-way left turn lane. We began with, with the Cadillac approach, where we went with full lane widths, which is 12 feet, 12-foot lanes, 14-foot shoulder, park strips, shoulders, you know, just the, the standard cross-section that we would have if, you know, there were no impacts. We quickly realized that that would be very impactful throughout the entire corridor, and then came up with another cross-section that was greatly reduced, where we got, where we removed shoulders, we reduced park strips, we reduced the lane widths. And so that's ultimately what, what we produced cost estimates for. To, to try to make the, the segments somewhat affordable, they were, this, the corridor was divided into three, into three segments, largely based on where traffic volumes, where there would be large changes in traffic volumes. So the, the first segment went more or less from SR92 up to Healy. Let's see, is it Road or Boulevard, whichever, Healy Boulevard. Then the next segment went up to, from Healy up to Ridge Drive, and then the final segment from Ridge Drive to the roundabout. And so we prepared concept designs and, and cost estimates for each of these. Let's see. We also included, because it was considered a priority by, by, by the study team, a, a trail, like a 10-foot trail on one side that would connect down to the, to the Caddy Lane Trail to get better connectivity and to foster active transportation uses in the area. Let's see. So as I mentioned, the Phase 1 project was the segment from SR92 up to Healy Boulevard. My understanding from, from Planning Commission discussion is that there's interest in, in potentially shortening that and not going all the way up to Healy. In, in looking at that, we feel like that segment could be divided and would probably, would recommend that the dividing point be 11,200 north. There's not a large drop in volumes there, but it is sufficiently far north that we could get what we call good lane utilization at the traffic signal at SR92, which is basically northbound traffic would, would more or less be evenly split between both lanes. So I'm sure you've seen locations where you're at a stoplight and the right lane drops, you know, disappears a few hundred feet downstream of the intersection, and nobody's in that lane. In our, in our office, we call the people that use that lane the capacity heroes because they're bypassing all these other cars and, and using that unused capacity. By having a longer acceptance lane or receiving lane on the far side of the intersection, we could get better lane utilization and make the improvements be more useful and reflective of what our analysis showed. So to do so, we would recommend at least 1,000 feet on the northbound side before the lane drops, which is nearly to 11,200 north. And so to drop it there, we would probably just recommend turning that into a, a right turn lane, trap lane. But I'm sure you've seen those around as well. So that's, I think, a very feasible benefit or better phasing of the project because the primary benefit, you know, the primary purpose of that is to really to improve the SR92 intersection. Widening to the north, I think, can follow as, as demand increases and, and the need arises. Let's see, I feel like that's.
So what you're mentioning is you could be supportive if the council made a decision to improve the SR92 intersection and only do a two-phase modification, where we do one phase up to 11,200, and then another phase from 11,200 to Healy, and then there'd be the other two phases in, in Alpine. But we could, you know, do, do the phasing approach, is what you're saying, that that would work?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, and I think that's, that's really the, the bulk of, of what we looked at in the study. So I'm happy to answer any questions or whatnot.
Just one question. And I, when I read through the study and different things, I didn't really understand. A lot of these changes are driven by population growth. And certainly on the west end of the county, Lehigh West, we've got phenomenal growth. In Highland, we're already up at 21,000. I've always been told that we'd be built out at 25. I think it's going to be closer to 26. But Alpine has low density. In the 2020 census, they were at 10,251. I don't know what their. I don't know what their projected build-out is, but I bet it's not more than 13,000. So I guess my question is, Cedar Hills is pretty much built out. On this end of the county, kind of this northeast corner...
We're gonna watch a movie now, no? Sorry, we're, we're, you probably don't know, we're having some technical difficulties right here, so they're trying to get us, our mon- or connected to see what you guys are seeing up there. So, sorry about that.
It was important to break into my train of thought. So anyhow... So I guess my question is, is in the northeast part of the county, in many ways, we're almost built out. So I'm just wondering what justifies a five-lane road up into Alpine when they have four and maybe a fifth exit out of their city, where they may be, you know, within 2,000 people are being built out. I, I just don't understand that. I, I was on the council before when we widened 4800 West and made it North County Boulevard, and went through kind of all the stress with the citizens at that time. And one of the things that's kind of frustrating to me is it seems like the traffic, once you build a wider road and a higher speed road, it seems like the traffic almost doubles. And it's because if you build it, they come. And, and so I, I just, I just don't understand from population growth why we need a five-lane road going up into Alpine on 4800 West, when there's four accesses, the city's not gonna grow that much more. We want to be good neighbors, but I worry a lot of times that we never, we're always worried about building bigger and faster, but we never think about what it does to the neighborhoods that are affected directly by that. So I, I guess that's a long way to go around, but what population projections were you using for 2050 for this northeast of the corner, of the county?
Yeah, you're right, they are, the, the, the projected growth is relatively modest, particularly compared to really almost the rest of the entire county. But part of what we find is that delay and congestion is not necessarily linear. And so when you hit the tipping point, it really accelerates. And so even though we're only projecting traffic volume increases, like at those SR92 intersections in the neighborhood of, of, what, 10, 15, 20%, so relatively modest increases, that still leads to a lot of, of extra congestion. As far as widening to the north goes, certainly we're projecting demand, like I said, for, for one of, of the two major roads to be widened. That wasn't a huge emphasis in the, in the study, so we didn't do a real detailed analysis there. We do know that, that, that traffic tends to drop off. We also know that, that there's always been a, an acknowledgement or an expectation that there would be some widening on the part of Alpine, who designed their roundabout to be a multi-lane roundabout in the future in anticipation of this. And so to some degree, we're, we're connecting the dots there.
So just one, once again, I think the question was, okay, so you looked at SR72 and you looked at 4800 West, but you're saying, why did you choose 4800 versus SR70, the Alpine Highway was, what was the reasoning again?
We were showing higher volumes on, on North County, 4800 West. Like you said, about seventy percent higher on the north side of the intersection, and then better connectivity down into the regional system, down towards I-15 and other roads.
Do you know how much of that traffic is because of the high school kids going to school?
I do not.
Were those peak hours there set like between, I guess I'll go look at the study.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight and two and three.
It's high school.
Yeah, and our, our analysis focused on eight, that same AM peak hour. So we do our traffic data collection from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Typically, I, I think we did that for this one, I'm not, it may have been slightly earlier. And then usually from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the afternoon.
And, and to do this at different times of the year, because I mean, when school's not in session, I mean, that would affect our traffic volume. I mean, that's a big problem when the kids go to high school.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we actually spent quite a bit of time working with our existing volumes. As I recall, we did wait until school was in session to do our traffic counts. And then this was also in the height of COVID, so we applied some adjustment factors as well, because there weren't, people weren't driving to work very much. And so we looked a lot at historical data to develop some adjustment factors to rep- to try to represent more typical conditions.
Are you saying that you use high volumes, basically? High-volume times to kind of make your determination?
Yes, that's right.
Counsel, have any questions? Thank you. Will you get to take some time, Andy, to also go through a presentation?
I am gonna take a little bit of time. Just for our reference, in the corridor that we're looking at, here's some video just taken this morning. You know, kind of during the latter part of the school commute, the, uh, flight drone pilot, I don't know what to call him, was there just a little bit late of the full commute, but this kind of shows you kind of what we're looking at. You can see, it's a little tough on the screen, but you can see the queues going up the hill, and that's kind of what we're trying to address. And then you can see the queues that build, you know, for the, for the right-hand turn to go south on North County Boulevard.
And this is high school time?
This is high school time. I don't, I, I'm not sure exactly, you know, the exact minute that we're at. I just know they were a little bit later in the commute, as it, you know, got closer to high school time. What you generally see is that, you know, about that fifteen minutes before school is about when it peaks out. And the drone pilot told me he thought he got there just a little bit late, but it's what we could get for this morning. So what you're seeing is, is, you know, live as of this morning. And so what we're trying to address, at least in the AM peak, is that queue that, you know, often builds, you know, clear up towards Canyon Crest Hill there in, in Alpine. So if you can go back to the PowerPoint real quick. Sorry, we're just gonna go to a couple photos that, again, the photos that we've taken haven't necessarily been on any given targeted day. They're just on the days that have been when we discussed this, right? And so last we, when we first started discussing this, it was in November, and I think this was the day before the council meeting. This was a PM peak hour photo, so what you see in the photo, this was 3:50 in the afternoon. You had cars queued back to 11,200 north. And then, can we go to the other photo? And this was the Friday before that. Little tough, because it was getting a little late in the year, so you see a lot of headlight glare, but you see the, you know, this photo's taken at 11,200 north, and you see the queues building up, as I indicated, towards the Canyon Crest Hill there in Alpine. And so often, this is what we see and experience here at this intersection. And, and so this is, you know, the reason why we're talking about this is because it is a problem that we do experience, right? And that's the whole reason the, the traffic studies were undertaken, is because at the various intersections along SR92, we were experiencing delay. And so, you know, the, the collective cities and, and the transportation partners undertook the study to figure out, well, what are the answers? And so, you know, that's what leads us here. Part of what, can we go to the MAG side? So part of, you know, what's pushing us along, I guess, if you will, is that we're right in the middle of a funding cycle with Mountain Lands Association of Governments. And so our final concept applications to Mountain Lands are due on March 17th. And at that point, you know, we have an opportunity, we're, we're a voting member both of the technical committee and of the regional planning committee. I'm on the technical committee, the mayor's on the regional planning committee. But we have the opportunity to then vote and rank and score all of the projects, you know, that have been put forward in the county. This is a two-year cycle. What we're looking at is funding that would be for construction years 25 and 26, and most of the money's in 26. So if, if we are successful in receiving the grant, you're looking at 2026. Can you go to the next slide? So as part of this process, there were kind of a idea levels. The MAG recognizes it's a heavy investment by a community to put together these applications, these estimates. And so they have kind of a filtering process, if you will. And on the initial idea level, they scored them appropriately for, you know, a traffic scenario. Green was go, yellow was caution, and red was stop. Meaning this was the MAG staff ranking them and telling the entities, well, if you scored green, you're probably gonna get funded, so it's probably worth your effort and money, and, and everything else is gonna go into the project. Yellow is, you might get money. You know, there's only so much money, and so the greens are probably all gonna get funded, and some of those yellows are gonna get funded. And the red was, you know what, communities, you might wanna rethink. They don't tell anybody you can't move forward, but you know, say, you might wanna rethink that. It might not be worth your effort to put, put that in. So this project did score green. It circled, I know it's hard for the audience to read, but it scored green. And so that's why we've moved forward and, and continued to pursue the funding. Now, one thing that I want the council and certainly the audience members to understand is, there are a lot of questions and a lot of very appropriate questions that people who live on the corridor have. And this is their homes, this is their lives. Many people who have been on this corridor lived here back before it was what it is today. I talked to one resident, you know, and, and her and my memory were the same. I remember when this was first converted to a four-way stop, you know, and, and, you know, I used to drive through here, you know, spend a lot of time here when, when it was a much different facility, both SR92 and 4800 West. It was a vastly different scenario. And unfortunately, many of these folks have had the world, the population, the traffic, the trips, however you wanna categorize it, come to them. All the while, they've been in their homes and trying to live life, and, and yet the travel keeps coming to them. And so they have some very appropriate questions as to how will this impact my life? At this point, what we know is that we have, you know, a problem. The photos and the, and the video, you know, we observed the problem, and we're trying to seek money to address the problem and find the best way to address the problem. And, and if we get it just right, we'll do just enough to address the problem, and we won't need to do anymore. And Ivan talked about, well, you know, can we possibly, you know, chop this first phase in half, so to speak, and go to 11,200 north? And, and then see, does that get us far enough? You know, is, will that address it enough? And can we get there? And, you know, there's some wisdom in that, because everything that we do and everything we talk about is going to impact people's lives. And, and we're very sensitive to that. And we all live somewhere, and we all have a home and a road that goes in front of our house, and, and, and we can all empathize with the fact that these are very personal issues. Unfortunately, where we are with our concept studies, many of the answers that people would logically want to know, we don't have perfectly vetted out yet. You know, the concept plans that have been developed were, were to help us come up with an estimate. And one of the hardest things to do, and the very hardest things to do, is to come up with an estimate before you know your exact impacts. But you've gotta have somewhere to start. And, you know, kind of, if, if you will, the whole reason we're talking about a general plan. Well, you've gotta have somewhere to start to say, okay, well, you know, this is probably, you know, an issue we need to tackle, and, and here's where we start. Between now, if we are, if we are successful and we pursue the, the path, and it looks like we would be successful based on those early rankings, there's a lot of discussions we need to have. There's some lot of very personal discussions on, with people in their specific homes, their specific condition, and there's certainly time for all of those, and they're very appropriate. And, and we'll have to look at some things very, very closely and very, you know, make the right, hopefully make the right decision. But right now, where we are is we're at the point where we're saying, you know, we've got a traffic problem, and, and we've got an opportunity to get some money to help us solve it. And, you know, our commitment would be that we would look at that very carefully and, and try to make that ever-elusive right decision that, that helps us do enough to address the issue and, and, you know, not overdue addressing the issue either. Find that right si- right sizing.
So Andy, can I ask a couple of questions? So in our, a five-lane road, and our general plan is supposed to be 106 feet.
Correct.
What is the proposal for, you know, is what was proposed here? Is it 106 feet coming out of? What is it proposed?
It's not, I apologize, I'm going to that page in, in my study here. And maybe Ivan, do you remember before, before then? It's 83? Somebody's helping out.
Is it 83, is it 94?
It, it's in that kind of 80s to 90s range. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the right page. But, yeah, it's, it's in that 80s to 90s. And what, and Ivan mentioned, you know, when we initially started to look at this corridor, we said, well, if you had a road here, what would you want it to be? And we said, well, we'd want to have all those elements that you see on that 106-foot cross-section. But you go in there and you try to put that hypothetically down on that corridor to say, well, what does that do to people's lives and to their homes? And how does that fit? And it became readily apparent that that was pretty invasive, you know, into the homes and the yards and, and, you know, the lives of the people. And so there was an effort to cut that, whoops, sorry, cut that back a, a little bit to the point where we achieved what needed to be achieved as far as the number of lanes and, and the transportation facilities. But, you know, we're also able to be as sensitive as we could to the impacts.
So let me just kinda, because what you're saying, you shortened it. Coming, if we're on the south side of SR92, we have 12-foot lanes. As they come over to 4800 West, do they go down to 11 feet?
Yeah, we're proposing 11-foot lanes as you went over 4800 West.
So then as we look, we have an eight-foot shoulder on the south side of SR92. Is the shoulder, that eight-foot shoulder gone as we go up over in the 4800?
As, as currently proposed, yes. The eight-foot shoulder is gone. There was a few people that spoke up in the Planning Commission that said, hey, there's a, there's a fair amount of road bikers, you know, the, the aggressive road bikers. And you ought to consider them. But right now, what you're seeing on the concept plans, there's no shoulders as it, you know, as you're looking at 4800.
Because there's no shoulder, the eight, the eight-foot shoulder on both sides is gone, so that's where you got 16 of the feet to take it, so that, okay.
Yeah, and so you got a couple of feet out of each of those lanes. That gives you, you know, about 20 feet.
Of our 106, we've taken that now down to 90. Where are we getting our other seven feet? Is it shortened down?
Yeah, we took it out of the parking strip, and then on, on the one side, because we, we condensed it to eliminate the park strip on the, on the west side. And then we left on the east side. It does show a, a multi-use trail, trying to, you know, address the active transportation needs. We certainly recognized there was a need for active transportation, and it's, it's one of those things that, you know, how do you find that elusive right size? And I think there's still, you know, as we look forward, an opportunity to study that right size and, and make those decisions. You know, in looking at this, we took a look at it and said, well, you know, we were trying to be very sensitive to those, those, those comments, you know, or those impacts. And as I listened in Planning Commission, you know, a number of people brought up great points. And so, like I said, in, in the time between now and the time when we, we actually got down to design and, you know, really pinning down those impacts, I think that there would be a lot of time for us to be able to study and, and make that right decision.
So how much will MAG, you know, Mountain Land Association of Government, you know, if they fund it, what percentage needs to come from the city? What would be the city funding portion?
So the, what they, what they term the local match is 6.77%. So MAG, you know, funds the balance. I did talk to UDOT, because you know, a lot of the, well, not a lot, a portion of the money, a couple million dollars of the money is spent on UDOT streets. And I talked to UDOT and said, so, you know, will you guys be covering your portion of the match? UDOT's comment to me was, they can't promise their funds out, because these, the funds that they would contribute are discretionary fund, if you will, they're a year-to-year fund. So the conversation was, you know, I don't see why we wouldn't participate, because it's bettering our intersection, you know, et cetera. We got the money for the intersection, it seems logical we participate, but I can't commit to it, because I can't commit until that construction year.
So when you're saying commit, so the 6.7 local match, is, is UDOT part of that 6.7? Or are they part of the MAG match?
Well, they would, we're asking them to be part of the 6.7. Well, they would, we're asking them to be part of the 6.7. The money from the MAG, you know, comes from the state and federal sources, you know. But UDOT would be, in this case, part of the applicants. Now, UDOT's not penning on the line, but they're saying, "Yeah, we would do all we could to chip in our portion of the match." They're not going to pay for stuff going up City Road, but they try to pay for the intersection.
So 6.7, is that shared with Alpine Highland? Is that, you know, and some of it's going to be a certain portion, hopefully will be UDOT? Is that the correct understanding on the funding?
Yeah, that would be, the rest of it would be shared between Alpine and Highland. You know, what UDOT didn't, you know, the rest of it beyond what UDOT contributed would be Alpine and Highland's bill. And I recognize it's a significant amount of money, but grant funding is probably the only way that the city's ever going to be able to address anything here because us taking it down on our own, you know, our current estimates are $9 million. You know, us coming up with $9 million to address, you know, this intersection on our own is probably not going to happen, right?
No, and I talked with you about this earlier as we're looking. Is it correct in the study, it's showing when we get to 2050, if the improvements are done on all the intersections along SR-92, that 4800 West, the traffic going north into, on 4800 and also south is actually, it's less?
Well, it's more, the thing that's a little deceptive in the, when I say deceptive, hard to understand, maybe is a better word, in the traffic study, they attempted to quantify, because they knew that a lot of the questions that were being asked by the cities was, you know, and in particular, the one that's closest to this intersection was, okay, well, if that road goes in, coming down off High Bench Road over by the Viewpoint area, if that road goes in and connects to SR-92, how much effect does that have on this corridor? You know, meaning if that road went in, would we, could we not do anything here? You know, that was the base question. So those traffic figures, you know, when they say on that, they say, you know, 2050 with new connections, what they're trying to show is, is if all those roadways that they considered going in, you know, that were kind of hypothetical at that point, went in, what would be the effect on the various intersections? So the one that has the colors that we're seeing on the screen, that's intended to show what the reductions would be. So in this case, the one that's going to have the effect on this one would be the High Bench Road connection. So if High Bench Road went in, the numbers in red would be where the changes were, the reductions in traffic, and the numbers in green would be where there was increases. And it kind of makes sense if you think of it and if we look on this particular connection, you know, in a north-south direction, you know, it goes down by about 100 cars. I'm just looking at the one particular through movement moving south. It goes down by about 100 cars if you're on southbound in the morning because 100 more people are taking the, you know, the High Bench Road. But it goes up in an east-west direction because they took High Bench Road down to SR-92 and then they came across SR-92. So that's why it's green there. So just a little explanation, very informative, but a little tough to follow in the study. So overall, the growth projections are still there, but they were attempting in these two figures to answer our question is, okay, well, what if, what's it look like without these connections? What does it look like with these new roadways?
Can I ask a quick question, Mayor?
Turn over the council.
Okay. Andy, one of the big arguments for the extension of Canal Boulevard, the east-west corridor, was to help alleviate the traffic around the high school. So, I mean, the east-west corridor's now been in almost a year and certainly is well-used. Have there been any studies looking at how much high school traffic actually comes down the Alpine Highway to turn on Canal Boulevard? Or that comes down 6,000 West to turn on Canal Boulevard? Because that was one of the big arguments for that road. And so it'd be interesting to know if the kids are using it. So the big elephant in the room's always been, is for some reason or other, all the high school students from northwest Highland and Alpine have to drive their own vehicle to school. And we try to solve this by spending millions of dollars building more roads and expanding the roads. But is there ever any effort to kind of teach the kids that maybe there's alternate routes you can go so that you're not in a queue that's four miles long into Alpine that we're going to reduce by half by putting in other lanes? It just seems like there could be some education. I've stood on that corner and watched the people coming around that right turn that we saw in your video, and they're all individual drivers driving their own cars. So how did we solve that? We sold property to the school to build in more parking lots to encourage more people to drive there. So it seems like we never approached the real problem and that's maybe some education. Why can't kids carpool? Why can't they choose a different route? Why do we have to spend millions of dollars making our roads bigger for, you know? I'd just like to see some studies because the big argument for the east-west corridor is to help the high school traffic. If no one's using it for that, why don't we educate them to do that? Does that make sense? It just kind of bugs me because we never ever talk about the real problem.
Yeah, your question is, you know, is appropriate, you know, as to what efforts are being undertaken to educate the high school kids. You know, I would need to coordinate with the school on that. We are seeing ever-increasing use on Canal Boulevard. We're seeing that being accepted. And we have actually recently completed some studies of the North County Boulevard corridor that we'll be bringing forward to talk with the council in the future on looking at things south of 92 through Canal. But the hard part in the traffic study, and Ivan was asked this question too, and certainly you and I can stand there and we can watch a car go by and judging by the age of the driver go, "That's high school kid. That's high school kid." But in the traffic study, if you're counting cars and you're the one at the intersection going, "Okay, this one goes here, 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 here," it's a little tougher to quantify, right? All you know is that you've got, you know, 800 cars or whatever you counted, but it's tough to quantify that one's going to high school, that one's going to work, you know? So that's a little tougher.
True. But do we have counts when it's not high school time, before and after?
Yeah, we certainly, we certainly could. What the problem is with the high school is it also mixes with all the go-to-work traffic too, right? And so most people are going to work to arrive there somewhere in the 8:00 AM vicinity. And so your typical morning peak hour is between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM, which also happens to be the same timeframe that all the high school kids are going, right? And so therein lies the complication.
Can I add some data to that though? Because I spent the day tracking down enrollment numbers from the high school to see if this was going to be a problem that was increasing or decreasing. And historically, Rob Smith, the district, is very good with his enrollment figures. If you look at his history, so Lone Peak High School is supposed to decrease in enrollment, 300 students by 2026, and it will continue decreasing after that. Timberline is also expected to have a significant decrease, down at least 200 by 2026. And Mountain Ridge is also, they're actually like kind of in the peak of their decrease right now, like 50% enrollment between 2016 and 2026. So it seems to me like building a road for a problem that we can see is going to be decreasing, if we are talking about those high school kids, we should consider that that problem is going to be decreasing, not increasing, over the next, and that's only over the next four years.
It's a valid point. You know, those numbers, I'm certainly not going to question Rob's numbers. He's been doing that a long time. And I think that's maybe one of the reasons why we would look at and suggest that, you know, the idea of taking it through 11-200 and then seeing, you know, how the growth projections look, how that performs. That idea of trying to make the right decision, make the right-sized decision, if you will, to right-size this project, you know, so that we do what we need to, but we don't do more than needs to.
So when you talk about phasing it, going that section at a time though, you're still talking about going the entire five lanes, just a shorter way. Is there consideration to, instead of going five lanes, a shorter way, going three lanes? And then adding in one of the other options as well?
If you go three lanes, that's what you have today.
Going...
Sorry, I don't mean to be rude.
Oh, you're good.
Maybe, Andy, maybe we ask it this way. What about if we go the five lanes to 11-200 as the general plan amendment? I'm just thinking, can we do this as a general plan amendment to 11-200, but past that, we don't do the modification? What does that, I mean, that takes it back down to three from the 11-200 up to Healy. You know, and I don't know if that's where the city borders at or if it's past Stony Brook.
The city borders right on the north side of...
Stony Brook?
Yeah, right on the north side of Stony Brook there. So, yeah, I mean, one of the complications and one of the things we're trying to fix is if you've ever driven that, the two inside lanes that turn left from North County Boulevard to SR-92, that easternmost left-turn lane often catches those unfamiliar with the intersection by surprise. And so we see this divergent movement where people get halfway through the intersection and they think they're going straight and then they realize the person next to them's also going straight and they try to figure out what to do, you know? One of the things we're trying to address with this is give two receiving lanes to the north so there's no more trap lanes in the middle of that busy intersection.
But if we just do that, if we do the intersection as, if you want to say 106 or the receiving lanes are five and then you bring it down, down at 11-200, and then past 11-200, you're just the three lanes.
Right.
You've taken care of the receiving.
And that's where Ivan, you know, we ask Ivan to look at that and say, "Okay, well, how long would we want to run that out?" You know, if you will. And that's where his recommendation was 1,000 feet. You'd want to go about 1,000 feet, which puts you just about at the 11-200 intersection. And so, you know, I think that you're going to, you know, where you land and how you make those transitions, you know, for that initial phase would be somewhere near that 11-200 if we chose to.
Council, we have a lot of residents here. Is there a couple of fast questions for Andy? Or we need to kind of open this up for also the public?
We'll be able to talk after the public.
Okay. So as we get ready to open this up for a public hearing, if we all could be sensative to try to keep it to three minutes and if you have others come up and say something that you were also going to share, maybe just say, "Hey, I also support what was said here," but maybe not share the whole thing just to kind of keep the time down. So at this time, we'd like to open up the public hearing for the general plan amendment to the transportation plan for Highland City. So those who'd like to come up. Please state your name.
Sorry if I'm stepping on any toes here. 20 years ago...
Please state your name.
I'm Stan Beasley. I live at the corner of 4800 and 11,000 North. 20 years ago, when we moved our family up here, it was a quaint little two-lane highway rolling up past the hills, rolling hills, beautiful scenery, very little congestion, and it seemed like absolutely the most ideal little spot to land in the world. But over the years, that's all changed. Now we've got all of this housing, all of these businesses, four-lane highways, and I think I speak for just about everybody in Highland when I say the reason we came out here is because of their wide-open spaces, unobstructed views, low-density housing, huge properties. And that's all disappearing as fast as we can watch it go. I don't see that widening this road is benefiting Highland in any way, shape, or form. If there's a traffic problem on that road, instead of spending billions of dollars widening it, let's make it less convenient for people to roll through there. The only people this is benefiting is rampant growth in Alpine. We're already built up as far as we can in Highland in that part. It'll only benefit rampant growth and contractors and whatnot. Going up in Alpine, that's doing nothing for Highland except paving paradise. And it makes no sense whatsoever. There's no reason for Highland to want this road going through. It devalues what's already been devalued over and over again for about 20 years now. And I have my dear neighbors, the Stos, that have had this sort of legacy for their family to be able to hand down this beautiful spacious property that doesn't have the same problems the West Valley City has. You know, if you want high-density homes and a bunch of shopping strips, move to West Valley. Don't ruin our city. I mean, I realize you've already taken your vote and you've made up your mind, but I don't see who it benefits in Highland unless you've got your hands in the pockets of the contractors and the developers in Alpine. It doesn't help Highland one bit. Make the road less accessible to people, not more. The more wide it gets, the more people are going to kind of want to trans through here for no benefit to us.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, can I make one quick comment? I would just like to say that I don't think any of us here have made up our minds about this. I think we're all still receiving emails and reading and, I mean, I certainly have a stake in this. I live here. I live in Highland. I want this to work for all of us and, I mean, I have yet to see a kickback. I get my couple hundred bucks a month, but I mean, that's about it. So I just want to say, I can speak for all of us that we haven't made up our mind and we're here to listen.
And if Brittany hadn't have said that, I would have.
Okay, thank you. If I could just ask, I appreciate everyone's excitement as someone talks, but if there might be some that feel something different as we clap, we can kind of push their opinion down. So we just need to be a little careful that everyone's welcome to come up and share. I recognize that there are large numbers here, but if we could just be a little respectful. So if we have others that'd like to come up?
My name's Scott Fuller. I live on Stony Brook Lane and want to thank you for hearing us out this evening and for bringing up this topic. You can tell by the room behind me, it's clearly touched a nerve and there's some strong feelings about it, which I think under the circumstances are understandable. Listening to Ivan's presentation and also Andy's, something struck out that I think we all noticed and I wonder if you noticed it too, that the primary considerations that he mentioned for the proposal on 480 West is volume and connectivity. Those were words we heard repeated again and again. One word we did not hear, not once from either presentation, was safety. Not once did safety come up. Mayor, you mentioned it as you talked about what would be required to make this five-lane approach work and dramatically narrowing the lanes, the buffer, the easements that would be available. Let's keep in mind what this road is going through. It looks nothing like what it looks like to the south, which is commercial and golf course and school. To the north, this is exclusively residential. It's just homes. So I don't know if Ivan took that into consideration in his assessment. Certainly, volume and connectivity may be improved, but the safety and a densely populated residential complex for both children, whom there are hundreds, for animals, would not be improved. And what makes it interesting that this is being pushed as it is is that the Highland City general plan has a priority of maximum safety for any project such as this, that that's a primary consideration. That's not getting much discussion yet. I hope that it does. I think the room hopes that it will. From the video that we saw from this morning, something was pretty apparent. You probably noticed it. The traffic was southbound. There were two, maybe three cars heading north in the morning. That makes sense. Kids are heading to school. But there's a mad rush in the morning to school. I'm not sure the afternoon would bear a similar picture of where the kids are driving home and the times that they go because of clubs and sports. Sort of, it's a very different picture, I would guess, in the afternoon. And so it seems like we should be considering all possibilities, all alternatives here. To your point, Councilman Smith, what really solves this problem? Does the build-it-and-they-will-come approach? Is that what we want for this part of Highland? Or do we want, as the gentleman mentioned, actually to maybe divert traffic through other means and to consider other alternatives? And I would ask that the council consider these alternatives very seriously. Maybe a subcommittee can be set up to further investigate this and evaluate it. And the remaining in this room would be welcome to be part of that. But thank you. And the remaining in this room would be welcome to be part of that, but thank you for your time and your consideration.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ann Boyle. My two, well, my daughter as well, but my two lovely grandchildren live on, up the top of Canyon Crest on Carlisle Avenue. So they are part of the evil Alpine, sorry. But I just wanted to mention that when we heard about this, it is not going to affect their property value at all. They're far enough in. This is not our issue. It's not the sound either. Tatiana, my daughter, grew up by the freeway. Sound is not an issue. That's not going to bother her. We're just looking at the safety here. We looked up the annual average daily traffic on both Alpine Highway and on Canyon Crest, and you know that they're almost the same. I mean, it's the craziest thing, they're almost the same. They average between thirteen thousand five hundred to fifteen thousand, depending on the time of year, but they're almost the same. And so it makes zero sense to me that we are talking about squeezing this road in in a way that might not be safe when we know we put our youngest and least experienced drivers down that road. And if we make it bigger and wider, more people are going to join with the high school kids going down that road. And that is my biggest concern, because Jack is car crazy and he's going to want to drive to school. And so I just really want us to look at the safety issue here, and I want us to look at both roads. Why are we talking about widening this road into a massive five-lane highway when we've got the same amount of traffic on it and on the Alpine Highway? And the Alpine Highway is already wide enough to maybe put in an extra lane if we need to. Now, I can see that there are problems with, everyone can see this with the sidewalk. We, we need a better sidewalk on that road. Also, I think we can all see that we need to do something with the intersection where two lanes are going south toward the high school. And can somebody please call UDOT and ask them to change the timing on the traffic light? I mean, that would be one phone call. And so I'm just thinking that we're using a bomb to kill a mosquito here. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's McCall Aldridge. I just moved here, I've moved all over the country really, but I just moved in not far from Stony Brook. I live over in the neighborhood just across the busyway, and my sister, who's also here actually, she just lives across the busy street. And I am a mother of two. My oldest is ten and she's autistic. And while we were staying at my sister's home, she got out of the house. She wanders and escapes and elopes, and it's an ongoing problem that we have, and it's something that children under five do all the time. So what happened is she got out of my sister's home on Stony Brook and then wandered out into the street, and she made it all the way to the busy road and almost got hit by a car. And I wanted to share some really important statistics for you. There are a lot of children, this is, this area of Highland, there's a lot of families starting to move in. We're seeing a lot of regeneration. I'm a real estate agent. I work in high-end luxury homes. We're seeing a lot of young families move in with children. Sidewalks are so important, and I wanted to share, really the only thing I wanted to share with, my daughter's fine by the way, somebody amazing stopped and realized that she was autistic and we found her. But I do want to share these numbers with you. Currently, there was a study by the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration. Five percent of people and children hit are killed, only five percent, if they're going thirty-two miles per hour or lower. If you go higher than that, it jumps up to over forty percent. And I just wanted to point that out, that our kids are important, and I know you guys all have, I mean, I'm sure you all have families. This is something that's more important than just lowering traffic. I feel like especially the ages, ages of these kids, I coached high school volleyball, like, they're reckless. Adding more lanes will not, I don't feel like will help the safety of this area. I would like to propose a three-lane. I also want to point out, as a real estate agent, it's going to deeply affect the homes on this corridor, a lot. There's, I, I could run a CMA for you, a, a market analysis on what, any home that is within two houses, doesn't matter if they're three million dollars now, it's going to affect their property values immensely. I lost my train of thought. But what I was trying to say, what I want to finish saying, is that I just, I do believe that three lanes is ample. I came from Lidera Ranch, California. We have almost thirty thousand people in our beautiful community. It's set up to be much like Highland. We have no four-lane roads anywhere in our entire community. We have lots of. Sure he's, he knows about, adding trees closer to the roads slow down drivers and make drivers more careful. So I would propose that a three-lane be added, maybe even adding trees, a median with trees would be ample.
My name is Merrily Christofferson, and I live, I'm building a home just off of Stony Brook Lane. When we found out about this, I immediately called my sister-in-law, who is a professor at BYU. I wrote each of you about it, and I appreciate your responses, but I just wanted to bring this up so it's on record. I told her the, the situation, and she said, well, she teaches a class at BYU on, on transportation planning. And she said, whenever our community is considering a redesign or expansion of a road, consideration should be given to how the expansion will affect all modes of transportation in the community, including cars, pedestrians, cyclists, potential public transportation, and equestrian. I didn't include the equestrian in my letter to you, but as I was driving here this evening, I realized we are in an equestrian area. There are lots of properties that have horses and, and animals, and so that should also be added, and she did add that. It just feels like this proposal does not appear to consider any of those things, other than cars. It's, I didn't hear one word about a sidewalk, so I'm assuming the sidewalk is being eliminated in the areas that there already is one. As Scott mentioned, this is a residential area. When we moved here, we loved how peaceful that, that road was, even though it was a main road. Most of the day, it's, it's pretty clear and quiet down there. Also, we have a dog, and I've already tried to map out what my walking path will be with him when we move into our house there. There's no sidewalks with this five-lane proposal, and that adds a concern. It's definitely not considering the, all modes of transportation when you can't even walk down the street safely. The other thing Dr. Redford went on to say is that in addition, it has been well documented in urban transportation studies that increasing the size of a road in an attempt to decrease traffic actually promotes the opposite and traffic increases. That's been mentioned quite a few times, but I am a hundred percent in agreeance with that. If we widen this road, the people that were taking Alpine Highway to get to high school are going to come this way on forty-eight hundred, because it's going to be the faster way. So I could go on. One thing I did want to point out, too, today I was driving up SR ninety-two, and I was counting the lanes, and there are many areas of SR ninety-two that are five lanes. That's how big that road would be. It might not be by foot that wide, by feet of each lane, but the amount of traffic that that will allow is the same as SR ninety-two, and that's just not what we want for our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deborah Gardner. I live on Stony Brook Lane, and something that I want to point out is, along forty-eight hundred west, there's only sidewalk on one side of the street currently. If we build this out into being a five-lane highway, are, is there going to be enough room for sidewalks on both sides, really? And there's, like, all of the houses along there are zoned to go to Highland Elementary, which means they get bused to the elementary school. And for the safety of those kids, this is a terrible idea, in my opinion, because do they have to cross the highway to get to the bus stop on that side? More lanes means more traffic, as we've already discussed. Or walk down the side of the road that already doesn't have a sidewalk on a highway where the bus stop is down further. My kids, I had to drive to school even now because I was worried about that. You make it a busy highway, and it's the safety of all of the other kids who maybe not have to walk from Stony Brook down, but they're now having a bus stop on the highway. And does that make sense to anyone for safety? It doesn't to me. And so I think that we need to take that into consideration, that on the east side of forty-eight hundred, all of those roads are dead-end streets. There's no way for the buses to turn around on those streets, so the bus stops have to be on that side, or they have to cross the highway. And if they're going to cross the highway, it only makes sense to end up putting stop signs in or, or more lights, and all that does is congest traffic even further. So it just doesn't make sense. And I think that that's something that needed to be considered when the planning commission was looking at all the options and the safety of the people and the families all around there. Thanks.
My name is Rochelle Broadhead. I do live on Stony Brook Lane. I have emailed all of you, and I appreciate everyone who's responded and your time tonight. I have a sister-in-law who is also on the city council, and I know how much time and sacrifice you give and the effort that goes into what you're making this decision. We are builders, and as builders, we come to you for city building permits. And when we do so, we have to follow your ordinances and what your guidelines are. This proposal clearly does not do that with the change that you've asked for, the eighty-three foot, where your requirement is a hundred and six. That is a pretty serious, significant deficit in the, in the size that you're asking for. I can't even get a conditional permit without notifying hundreds of people. And, and here we are, we haven't been notified, we found out about this because it passed Alpine. So the concern is very valid for me in that it's not following our set proposed outline, and I'd, I'd encourage you to make sure that we review that, and as many people have said before, our goal is to keep Highland beautiful. We just voted on, or I shouldn't say we, if I'm participating, but you just voted on the Mountain America beautification and the proposal to keep America, or to keep that structure in accordance with our goals as Highland City. I cannot see how this enhances where we're looking at going with our, with our community in general, and I, I just second everyone's points that have made thus far. Thank you.
Jake Schoeff, I live on Stony Brook Court. I'll be brief. I concur with everything that's been said. One thing that I will add, we moved to Highland two years ago, and we moved from South Jordan, and if any of you've been, have been on the west side of South Jordan, you'll know why we moved to Highland. Because we wanted less traffic, we wanted more home, me feel, larger lot, better place for our kids to play. And so I oppose this. I think it's largely irresponsible for the safety of everyone involved. Appreciate your consideration. One thing I will add, from eleven two hundred to into Highland, there's no turn lane on our road. So I don't know if there's a plan for that. If there is, great. If not, maybe that's something to consider. I know that that will help dramatically when we drop our kids on and off from school, get the bus, et cetera. I think a turn lane there will really help mitigate traffic as well, because when you turn into Stony Brook, coming north, coming south, excuse me, it blocks, it blocks traffic. So, because there's no turn lane. So something to consider there. Thank you.
I've lived here in Highland for the last twenty years. I live at eleven oh eighty-eight north, forty-eight hundred west, one of the homes that will be more significantly impacted due to this widening than probably any other, given that my driveway is only thirty feet wide. I don't mean to put you on the spot, chief, but I want to ask, is it easier to patrol an area where there's a shoulder on the road, or is it easier to patrol an area where there's no shoulder whatsoever? At the current proposal, there's no shoulder for that road for a five-lane, basically, highway going up. That road is already dangerous. There are people who ride their bikes up and down there. There's no sidewalk in front of my house. It's been that way for years. The current proposal does have a sidewalk, does have a small buffer zone, but it also puts a five-lane road within about five or six feet of my driveway, actually in front of my house, will be severely impacted by that. So what I would urge you guys to do is to consider the safety of the residents who live along that road, and the safety of the people who are actually going to be using those sidewalks, they're going to be using that right-of-way, rather than just looking at it from a standpoint of, let's skate by with as little widening as possible, and that we're going to try to keep it, you know, as economically feasible as possible. If you can widen it out enough, we're, we're going to talk about speed. We're going up in speed when we have more, more room. We're going from twelve feet wide roads on, south of SR ninety-two, to eleven feet, so we're going to squeeze it in, and I think we're going to be kicking the problem down the road to eleven twenty by only doing the, this at one section at a time. You're going to bottleneck it there, and, you know, I'm not a traffic study guy, but it doesn't matter. I, I can see a problem. It's, it's pretty obvious. The sound from there, the previous zoning meeting that we had, they talked about somebody bringing a decibel meter out. It's over a hundred decibels out there. I wear headphones if I go to mow my front lawn. It's not because of the lawnmower noise, it's because of the road noise. When I go out to check the mail, I reach around to get my mail, because I don't want to step anywhere near that road, because people go seventy, eighty miles an hour down there regularly. So if we're going to do this, let's do it right. Let's widen it out, make enough room to put in a sidewalk, to put in sound walls, and if you have to take out my house, you're going to have to take out my house. If it's going to be impactful that way, it's going to be impactful that way. There's no way to go around it. It seems like an already foregone conclusion, despite the fact that you guys haven't voted yet. The study's already there. They've already mentioned that they do need that, that road widened out. We do need that extra lane. I don't see why we can't do it on the other side on fifty-three hundred, but apparently forty-eight hundred is the best spot for it. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else that'd like to come up?
My name is Spencer Robson. I live in eleven, eleven-one north, forty-eight hundred west. This will directly affect us. It, it already affects us right now. Currently, this road is safer than what you're proposing. The traffic backs up, but by backing up, it goes slow through our property, through in front of our property. Luckily, we have a circular driveway, so you don't have to back out into the street, but some of our neighbors aren't like that. They have to back out into the street with traffic coming through. If you make this a five-lane road, the speeds go up down the street. What, I think they're forty-five miles an hour on a five-lane artery road? So if they're forty-five, everyone's going fifty-five, and they're going to be going faster than that, trying to make it through the light. So safety is our number one concern. I sent you all an email, you know, with the number one option being, just do that connector route. If you do the highway road, the study shows it decreases the traffic on forty-eight hundred west, takes away the problem and keeps our feel, our Highland rural feel there. It alleviates the problem. So, thank you for your time.
My name's Amy Olson. I live on the corner of forty-eight hundred and Jonathan, and we would be on the far side of the, on the west side, but we would deal with the noise. And we have called and asked UDOT what their noise abatement regulations are, and this is according to UDOT. This would be considered a type-one project, which would be the construction of a highway or substantial horizontal alteration or substantial vertical alteration of an existing highway, or in addition of through-traffic lanes. And for UDOT, sixty-seven decibels for the exterior of a residential area is the trigger point for doing noise abatement. And our neighbors have already told us that at the corner, it's a hundred decibels during high-traffic times, which means that we'll be yelling at each other in our yard while we use our patio or play soccer with our kids. We won't be able to hear anything. So if this is what has to be done, and I suggest that we do something else, I really like the idea of two lanes south, one lane north. But if we do this, then Highland City needs to do what UDOT would do for residents, and that is to build some noise abatement walls that will allow us to continue to have some quality of life in our outdoor spaces.
Hi, I'm Shane Davenport, and I'm at one-one-one six- Hi, I'm Shane Davenport, and I'm at 11161 North on 4800 West. And I want to echo what everybody has said. I, I agree with what, with everything that's been brought up. Less than a year ago, Mayor, you called me and asked me for my feedback on the frustrations of this road. And I really appreciated that. And I appreciate the time you guys are taking to also address our concerns. Safety right now is my biggest concern. What you're doing is proposing to remove the park strip, narrow those lanes, add two lanes. And my house is probably one of the closest houses to that road. You're asking me to cross two lanes either way to just pull out of my house. That's dangerous. I just wanted to add that thought on to, to this. I also have been working from home for the past two and a half years. One thing that wasn't mentioned is I think after COVID, there's going to be even less traffic with more people working from home. My, my job has told us that we're only going to go back at the most one day a week. So I think there's going to be even less traffic at that point. I also work, my office is right in front of the road. And every day, when the school kids come by, they stop, and the bus stops there and turns on its stop sign and it signals. Every single day, some of the kids from the high school just fly by that, and I hear that bus honk every single day. I think this is going to be dangerous. I think it's not wise. And if it has to be done, we definitely should do it right, and I don't think this is the plan.
Hi, my name's Tyler DeHart. I'm from Alpine as well. I wish I was from Highland. You guys got, you guys got the opportunity to be here tonight. We weren't even told about it. It was voted and done before we even knew about it. The mayor called the guy and asked him, are you kidding me? You're, you're the man. You know what my mayor said to me? She quoted scripture. It's better that one die than 99. Because my house is one that gets 18 feet cut off the side of it. I back onto Healy. So I, man, you guys are fantastic. Very impressed. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tatiana Linsley. I live on 340 Carlisle Avenue, which is just one nor, one road north of Healy Boulevard. And that is where it will definitely condense to 83 feet. The question's about the sidewalk is that it will get down to three feet, which is the bare minimum, which it is right now. And I will tell you that my stroller has already been clipped twice in the three years that I have lived there. So that's one thing. But I do want everyone to know that we did, our neighbors, we did submit a referendum to Alpine City yesterday. Because we were not part of this, they voted on it, they pushed it through without anyone knowing. Something that should also be known, a question that you brought up, is at the planning and commission meeting two weeks ago, they said at a max, they believe that Alpine's built-out population will be 14,500. Now, my mom told you about this study that UDOT has on their website, where they say that Canyon, the ADDT for Canyon Crest is 14,500 passes a day, and 13,500 passes a day on average for Alpine Highway. Now, the importance in that is that the, the two roads are balanced. And the thing that we need to keep in mind too, is that with Alpine's growth, based off the numbers that they were given at the meeting, we will never, what's the word? Succeed that? Max, yeah, we'll never max that out. So there truly is not a need for us to, to max out these roads. They, they can, they can hold our growth. And I thought I was going to say something else, but I forgot. Thank you.
I'm on Stony Brook Lane in Highland. I'll keep this really short and sweet, so I can go on record just agreeing with everybody who opposes this. But I also just wanted to mention that I heard 55 seconds by 2050, and it just makes absolutely no sense to spend that kind of money at this point in this town. We have a lot of time to deal with this and come up with the right conclusions, the right studies. It's not worth risking lives or just pushing something through for the idea of some federal grant, or for some UDOT grant, or some money somewhere out there. This is a very serious thing, and I just encourage you guys. I, I got to listen to people painting their house white, and I got to learn about a doctor here today, and someone from California. I got to learn about people. I just think this is a great place, and unlike Alpine, we actually get a voice this. I think it's just really important to take a minute and consider it, and don't worry about that March 17 date. We will get more chances if the road's really that bad. Thank you for your time.
I'm so sorry I remembered. The other thing that I learned at the Alpine Commission and Planning Meeting is this is an all or nothing deal. You're not signing up for phases. You are agreeing to the whole deal. Whether that takes five years to get put into place, or 25 years, you are committing to the whole deal. It's an all or nothing deal for MAGS. The other thing is, Law &amp; Law, one of the city council members told us, Alpine would not be willing to condemn homes, that they would be willing to work with us. But it is in the MAGS report that is a requirement for the city to apply for that money, that they would be willing to condemn homes and land. Thank you.
My name's John Ork. I live Joey Court, so my backyard's up to 4800, North Country Boulevard. I, I really believe that, that we've got two problems. One is a noise problem, and the noise problem is happening during the time of day when people are on the accelerator going by the house. The congestion problem is happening between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. They're two different problems. They both need a solution. I think safety, speed, those are important, you know, those are, and sound. But I think they happen at different times of the day, and I think we need to make sure that we understand that, and we look at solutions for, for each of those independently. So getting the, the speed down, that'll keep, I mean, you don't have a sound problem when the cars, somebody mentioned it before, that when the cars are backed up, it's not a sound problem anymore, it's a congestion problem. So we need to address that maybe specifically. If we put a connector road up north and bring, bring stuff in from Alpine, I think that's a great way to give them another option to exercise and to be able to bring, bring vehicles out on the north side. I think taking Alpine Highway and making it a highway, I run that every day. I run up into Alpine and back into Highland. I've been doing it for a couple of years now, pandemic time, so. But there's an opportunity I see on the Alpine Highway to actually make that into something where you can add a little bit more, take it down into an industrial, industrial, commercial zone, and keep the residential space residential. And if you're going to do anything, I think just, I mean, when you come into a congestion spot, it's always the input traffic that's the problem, not the output. Somebody else mentioned that with the drone footage. We didn't see a problem of stuff going north, and you don't see it the rest of the time of the day because of how things get released, people are staying for practice, they're doing some other stuff. You don't get the same driver to bring, to have a northbound problem. So maybe putting a, a little bit, going from a three lane to a four lane, so you have two lanes coming into the congestion spot at the light, but don't make it into a five lane highway. That's making it into a non-residential space. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Chen. I'm also on Stony Brook. Stony Brook alone has 18 lots. You're thinking, you're talking to 18 families with multiple vehicles trying to take that left turn. Can you imagine taking a left turn on a five lane? Even my son, I try to, I walk often, and just across that street, I mean, he's like, let's go, scooter! It is so dangerous. My son almost got hit. And he, he's four. I mean, he's like, I'm going home, right? There's no stop sign, no crosswalk, there's no speed bumps. That, I, I have a wonderful view of that street, and I, I think once a week, there's an accident on that street. I mean, I see traffic lights all the time. So that is just my quick input. I would love to do two, two south lane, one north. I think that will solve lots of the problems. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wesley Warren. I live, I live way over there. And, and, and I get three minutes to talk about a couple of things that I don't really know anything about, but it's my three minutes. And I especially don't know as much as anyone behind me. And I've been following this for quite a while, like I do most things. I, I follow and I stay in my seat and I be quiet, and I don't say much. But, eh, well, I don't say much up here. Texting you guys, but, but I think you might want an outsider's perspective. Congestion sucks. It does. But it's slow, and it seems a little safer than accommodating a lot more speed and efficiency, and everyone that needs to get where they're going real fast. And I feel like there's some more creative ways to maybe address this issue. Seems like the congestion gets, you know, a little bad during high school driving time. It's a lot of money we'd be spending on widening some of these areas. If I was a junior, senior in high school, and someone gave me a couple hundred dollars a quarter to ride my bike to school instead of drive my car, or to carpool instead of, you know, driving alone, it seems like two birds with one stone, you know? Some kids in these guys' pockets for lollipops and whatever high schoolers buy. And it's getting some more cars off the road. I don't know. I think there's like creative solutions to this, to this problem. And I would be down with even making things more slow and sleepy. Let's get all the traffic, let's get all the congestion, and, and make people change their driving patterns and stagger when they go to work. And, I don't know, I'm just blabbing at this point, but I got 60 seconds? Is that right? It's only been two minutes? All right. What was your goal, Mayor? Like, city council meetings over by like 10? Was that, was that your, yeah? Okay, all right. Thanks.
Hello, my name's Deborah Schrock. I live on the corner of 4800, that busy road, and Tempanogas Highway. I live right across the street from these guys. My, I'm very much against this, because my property's going to be severely affected. You know, I don't know how many feet is going to be taken into my yard, my fence, my block fence will go down, all my mature trees will be gone. So I'm not real happy about that. I just wanted to bring up, I totally want to thank you guys all for being here and, and having to deal with this issue. I do agree with everyone that's come up here. I think we're, one thing that I noticed is maybe we're, Andy, thank you so much. Your whole tone changed from the planning meeting. You know, I think you really listened to us where I really didn't think we'd been listened to. So I appreciate that. I wasn't even going to come tonight, because I thought, what if, if, whatever we say, is it really going to make a difference, you know, after your talk? So thank you for seeing what we said, you know, and taking it to heart. I, I kind of feel like we are trying to ramrod it in through to get to this March 17 deadline. You know, if we don't get that deadline and get that money, okay, yeah, let's just get the money, and then later we'll figure out what we're going to do, you know? I don't know. I don't know if that's really the right way. There, being, living on that corner, there is an accident a lot. There was in the past. But I want to tell you that UDOT, or whoever is managing that intersection, there's alternatives that can happen. You know, they came, they put in these turn signs, it's been a lot better, and I really have not noticed one accident in the past two or three weeks, maybe other people. I can't say I've been there 24/7. But I just think there are alternatives that we need to explore as far as handling the situation. I agree with the people here as far as this is Highland. We moved here for this quality of life. We don't need a five lane freeway going down the middle of it, where people are just going through Highland to get to Alpine, or if that's their, what they're doing. I have nothing on Alpine. My son lives in Alpine. I love Alpine. But I just don't see us making this a five lane freeway to get there. I think there's other alternatives that we can explore, and that will be just as good. Thank you.
I live on Stony Brook. I realize I'm part of the issue. I've only been there four years. I haven't been here 20 years. But I am really concerned about the safety of it. My kids are 14 and under. There's been a couple of comments here about rerouting the traffic and accidents, and, you know, I see the intersection over by Chevron. I don't know what the name of that road is. And the accidents that I see there are almost daily, and they're horrific. I, I've been very close to having horrific accidents there myself, with people cutting in front of me that have been honestly terrifying. And one big concern I have is if you take all of the inexperienced drivers that there are in Alpine, these young high school kids, and you make that intersection that much faster and that much busier, what's that going to look like? You know, it's already the case that we have over by the Chevron intersection. And if you take all these young kids and run them through there at a higher speed during busier times, I am really concerned about that. I'm also really concerned about the traffic all day long in the summertime with bikers that are on that road. There's a lot of biking traffic. My kids and I, and my wife, love to take bike trips throughout the week, you know, even on non-busy times, on Sundays and weekends. And I'm really concerned, if there is no shoulder there, what that's going to look like for all those bikers that are constantly coming in and out of that area. It just seems like a nightmare to have a five, five lane road with no sort of offset there for, for that, that type of, of traffic. You know, I, I do really appreciate though, the, the feedback that we have had from you guys. I've seen a lot of the email and correspondences. I really do appreciate that. I agree with most of the sentiment that, almost all the sentiment that's come here. The other two things I would say is, you know, why are we doing more than one lane going north? Have we looked into the traffic experiments with that? Is there really a reason to have more than one lane headed north? Based on the video that we saw there, I didn't see anything going north. And I would have liked to see in the video how long the light actually was working going south. You know, I, I don't know if you have experimented or not, but I am curious what sort of experimentation has been done as far as light times in the morning, to see what sort of effect it has on that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liz Megel. I live in Carlisle Avenue, 278, right there in the corner. So I'm just not going to even talk about how dangerous it will be for me to turn to my house to the dry wet itself, because I will be right there. But, I mean, that only concerns me and affects me, so I understand that. As of right now, accidents are happening very often in that little road. Nobody respects the speed limit, so I can only imagine on a road that wide, and with a speed limit even higher. You said, Andy, that the street is going to go from 109 feet to 83 feet. I don't think that gives enough space to proper road for the car, for the sidewalk. I don't, I hear that, he says that they don't, they only study the 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM time for that road. And I wonder, is that it? Only one hour that we worry about? I don't, I didn't hear any study about when it was that peak times. What was the concern? I just think that it seems like it, that they're willing to cut corners in order to fit a budget. Because for me, if you're going to go from 109 to 83, but you have the same amount of cars, that's cutting corners, in my opinion, but that's just my humble opinion. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jed Robinson. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I'll be brief. I just like to echo that I agree with everything that's been said tonight. And I'm also representing the Snowflake Drive cul-de-sac, which is right off 4800 West. I'm on the lot that borders 4800 West and the Snowflake Drive, and there's two other houses, another lot. And I've talked to all of them who couldn't be here tonight, and we all oppose this very much, and just wanted to... and we, we all oppose this very much, and just wanted to be on record that, that it's in opposition to that, and, and all of our neighbors all seem to be doing the same. Um, I haven't heard one person that supports it tonight, so I guess my going-away concern, and I have to go, so I wanted to get before I do this, is just, um, I, I'm a little bit perplexed why we're trying to push something through so quickly when there's not one person that's up here arguing in favor of it besides, um, the planning commission, and in, in my experience, trying to push something through to, to get money, um, or to, um, at the, at the, you know, when you have lots of opposition to it, and if, and opposition to it and it affects other people, um, you're usually doing it poorly, you need to take the time and, and hear everybody and maybe look at alternatives before, um, those decisions are made instead of doing it quickly, so, other than that, thank you very much.
My name is Stephen Stowe, I live on SR 92, right next to the Beesley's. My mom lives on 4800 West, on the other side of the Beesley's. I enjoyed seeing my house on many of these pictures, I enjoy seeing my parents' house on many of these pictures. I moved to Highland 53 years ago, I've seen a little change, I haven't complained once. Last week I was very disappointed, I have never been so disappointed at all. I appreciate Nathan, he came up to me, I pointed out some things with my mom's home that took place when they made the turn lane that was so successful, that still have never been addressed and never been resolved by the city. He approached me, I did get a phone call, which I haven't, we haven't connected yet, but I appreciate it, thank you very much. I was one in the meeting that was told this was a done deal, that it had already been taken care of, that it was going to happen and to come here today just to minimize the effect that we had on our particular circumstance, so that's where that came from. Um, I have not spoken with anyone on this council, I appreciate those in the city who have reached out to me. It's a little interesting, the Alpine Highway was there when I moved here 53 years ago, and it was designated a highway, and it was supposed to be a highway, a big highway. It never has grown, it's always stayed the same, but if you notice, all the houses are quite a bit distant from the road. There was a reason for that. 4800 West, yes, it grew, it grew, and it's just one of those things that happens, and never complained, adjusted, my mom didn't complain about this proceeding, other than I hope it's safe and I hope it doesn't take even more of our property again. Last night I left my house on SR 92 at 6 o'clock, I went straight across the road into the turn lane that drives down, I didn't have to wait for cars, nothing, I made it through, there was no problem whatsoever, 6 o'clock on a Monday night. This morning I left to go to work, later than usual, I left my house at 7:30. I can go out and I can get out on it, on 4800 West and turn right, why do I want to do that? It's full of high school kids. Could I come out and go like I did last night? Why do I want to do that? It's full of high school kids. So what I did, I went west, and I went down to the Alpine Highway, I went to the New Canal Road, I came back up to the, uh, 4800 West, and I went down by the hospital where I work. It works. It, we don't have to do anything, somebody from last week's council told me, so what if traffic backs up? It just slows it down. There's no reason for us to do anything with it. I appreciate you, I appreciate your efforts, I know that it is so hard, it's tough, I understand that. Thank you for your time.
I'm Christopher Howden, Mayor, and city councillors, thank you for what you do. This is quite unusual, um, and I don't know if this is even appropriate for me to do, but last Tuesday, I voted yes for this, and nobody's been lobbying or pestering me at all, but as I've had time to think about this, I can't undo my vote, but if I had more time to reflect about this, I would not have voted yes, I would have voted no. And it's not my, my reason for voting yes was not in opposition to the spirit of, you know, taking one for the team, or we live in communities where we hopefully like each other and get along well, but we have to have power lines and roads and things like that. And so, my thinking was, I don't really fancy this, but we probably should vote yes just in the spirit of being good neighbors, but as I've thought about it, I've thought about all the charming towns that I grew up in, in a country not here, and I, I love being an American, um, but if you travel through other parts of the world, they have these squishy little roads, these charming little towns, and you just wait for a month of Sundays, the traffic is awful, it's really horrific, and so, I would just suggest two things if you'd be willing to consider this. Number one, I learned an important lesson over the last few days, that for, for grave or weighty matters like this, there's wisdom in just pushing pause and gathering data and thinking over a period of time, and then the second thing I realized is, maybe being annoyed at a squishy little road and waiting for an hour or two is not necessarily a bad thing, and this is not a topic for tonight, but I would also emphasize that we don't have any speed tables in Highland, and I think that's something we should maybe consider. You'll, you'll have somebody that'll speed once, and they'll lose their muffler, and then the next time around they'll think, you know, maybe I shouldn't go. Um, 11200, the road that goes east-west, south of, um, American Fork Junior High, that's a broad road, but it's 25 miles an hour and it's aggressively policed. I go down that road a couple of times a week with my horse trailer, I never go 26 miles an hour, you've got to go 25, um, but, but for good reason, because we want to be safe, so that's two cents from the peanut gallery.
Can you say aggressively policed again, please?
Yes.
Uh, but not my car, though.
[laughing]
Good evening, uh, my name's Bryson Nelson, I'm at, uh, the corner of 4800 and Stony Brook Lane. Uh, we just, uh, finished, uh, construction of our home about a few months ago, and I appreciate your time, and I know, uh, it's a difficult job to consider all the needs of a lot of different folks, um, but what I would say is, um, speaking about the impact on us personally, uh, I don't think we would have built our home where we did if we thought there was a five-lane coming through, so I mean, it's, that, I don't think that's in dispute that that impairs the value of those homes, um, but I also understand that the world doesn't revolve around us. Uh, but as I thought about some of the analysis I've seen done, um, and as someone who's very familiar with how financial decisions are underwritten in the private sector, uh, that was entirely missing here, we had a budget, we had data around traffic flow, but no connection between the two. And so, I was just sitting back there, I did some kind of back-of-the-envelope math, and I'm looking at, uh, you know, the, this peak traffic time as, as vehicles are coming back, uh, southbound, um, I, I think it's over, you know, I think the consensus that's overwhelmingly high school students headed to school, uh, I suspect very few of them are actually from Highland City. Um, I, I'm also, uh, suspect that, you know, again, that doesn't exist going northbound when they get out of school, as has been mentioned, and, you know, frankly, if, if you think about it, you say, okay, let's say roughly 300, this is the back-of-the-envelope math here, roughly 300 of these students, um, it saves them about 10 minutes a day, they go to school roughly 150 days a year, that works out about 45,000 minutes, um, and so you do the, the math, you compare that to a $10 million budget, which, um, I'm not sure if that considers the impairment value of the homes that would be affected by this, it certainly doesn't expect the condemnation if that were to happen, certainly if they were to add a shoulder, our home would be affected, uh, I suspect that would take up a pretty meaningful chunk of the $10 million. Um, and, uh, in any event, I did a payback period, about 90, payback period on that analysis, about 90 years. In the private sector, uh, that's what we call lighting money on fire, um, and, and, you know, frankly, the other implication of that is if the maintenance cost is 1% of that budget a year, that wipes out the payback period altogether, you'll, you'll never make money back, and I get that this may be grant money, or, I, I'm not totally familiar with that, um, but, we're all still fundamentally taxpayers, I, I, although Highland, uh, high school students are probably not, their parents are, um, uh, but I, I, again, um, economics just don't, don't make sense, and so it'd be really interesting to see that type of analysis done, and certainly, it would be an imperative, you know, in, you know, the private sector to see that done, it'd be helpful to see that here, thank you.
My name is Devin Bybee, I live on Stony Brook as well, and I agree with everything that everybody said here. So it seems like we're trying to solve, you know, 20 minutes in the morning, um, when kids are going to high school. Outside of those times, that road is really not that busy, it's really not. Um, I don't know if I'm missing something, if those kids are marching on City Hall, you know, saying like, we got to fix this problem, because, if they are, I don't, I mean, my kids, we have five kids, right, so, they don't go to high school yet, but when they do, I want them to stop it there, I wa- I don't want them to cruise through, I want them to wait for that light, and I want that traffic to be there for them. And I would beg to argue that most of the, the high school, the parents of the high school kids coming from Alpine would prefer to have that slow, uh, lane through there, not a, not a, not a highway like that, so, I support everything that everybody said, and I appreciate you guys' time and consideration of this, thanks.
At this time, we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing, we'll turn it back over to the council if they have any questions, comments, or clarification.
I, I just had one comment, uh, just thanking all of you for coming, because it certainly has taught me a lot, and, um, so I appreciate your time, I know it's late, and so, and also the emails that we have received, and how civil and respectful that you have all been, so I just wanted to thank you all for that.
I really appreciate all the emails, your comments, um, this is a great thing about Highland, is, um, just reading over these emails, I tried to, um, respond to as many as I possibly could, um, but the great thing about our residents is, um, when we do have a problem, um, we're able to get feedback from you guys, you guys live there, you know how to think outside the box, you guys are the ones who probably have a better idea of what the solution is in us, um, and so this is what I really love about, um, being able to just sit here, discuss it, and, and get your feedback on this, and I think, um, there have been a lot of great, um, comments about this, really good feedback, great suggestions, and for this purpose, um, I think I need a little bit more time on this, because I want to take all your suggestions, your feedback, what we've said tonight, all those emails, take it back to our engineering, Andy, and, um, see what we can do here. I, I, I think that's the way I'm leaning right now.
Go ahead. Well, Brittany and I were kind of having, staring at each other, but-
I'm sorry, they were-
Tim can go, and then we'll talk.
Go ahead and go, Tim, I want to make sure I'm getting some-
I, I tend to agree with, with Kim. I had-
Pardon me?
I was like, you agree with me always, come on.
[laughing] I disagree with that statement. Um, we heard a lot of really heartfelt, sincere comments tonight, and I think my opinion was, kind of like the mayor of Alpine, it's like, one person suffers so that the group can benefit. I'm not leaning that way anymore, I appreciate that you came here, I appreciate what you said, and I, I agree with Kim that I think we need to take a little more time and consider this issue. I've actually jotted down some notes and have some ideas, and, um, anyway, I just wanted to thank you for coming out and expressing your views in a respectful, very sincere way. Go ahead, Brittany.
Yeah, um, so I think one thing about this, this whole proposal, is it's kind of been a series of unfortunate timing of deadlines, and that's been really hard, and I think it's really easy to say, um, you know, study it out, we don't care about the money, we'll figure that out later, but I mean, I think that we as a city council definitely care about the money, so we want to make a careful decision. Um, that being said, I don't think that there is, um, a good decision that could be made tonight also. I think that we, um, and I want to say thank you to the gentleman who did the traffic study, I appreciated that, and hearing all the great feedback from staff, I think was, um, was really great also. I, I just think there are too many things that we don't know, and I think there are too many things that we haven't considered enough, and I think there are too many other options. And for me personally, I have a problem making a decision also, when we have this big piece of land called the gravel pit that is going to be something someday, and I think it is smart to know, um, maybe what we think that's going to be before we establish some great big intersection there, in a place where I, I don't see the population expanding hugely, I would like to explore options that, um, don't harm the residents as much. Andy, am I correct in a su- in, um, in saying that this, this, this study and this proposal is, it is accepting a proposal on this particular road, it is not that we would be, um, we would have any other options available to us, like the high bench road or anything else, this, um, proposal from MAG is only for this particular road, not for studying and solving this problem, is that correct?
Let me, let me restate your question to make sure I'm understanding right. So, are you asking, uh, if improvements were done here, would that eliminate the opportunity to do other roads? Is that, uh-
Um, yeah, I am asking that in the proposal that was submitted to MAG, it was specific to this, it was specific to this road and this intersection, so, you couldn't say, we like the MAG funding but would like to use it to solve our problem a way that we think is best.
Right, no, what, the way the MAG process works is, you take them, collect them, being the collective group, which is all of the, you know, the representatives of the county, you take them a specific project, and you say, you know, here's our specific project, this is, you know, what we're soliciting funding for, it doesn't prohibit you from going, you know, in the next round to say, you know, now we want to seek funding for this, or, or, you know, Project A, Project B, or Project C, but you wouldn't have the opportunity to switch, uh, roads at this point, i- if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, okay, so two other quick comments. Number one, um, to everybody is, who is here who mentioned safety, um, and that that wasn't something in the proposal or the presentation, I'm, I think one of the reasons for that is that underlies every single thing we do, and so I feel like maybe we should say that more often, but I, it's the number one thing that we consider anytime we do anything, so I just want you to be sure that you understand, um, that for sure, that we, we for sure worry about safety. Um, I would also just like to take this moment to lobby for a different idea, which is that I think that having public input tonight and thinking about it for two more weeks and understanding concerns and decisions, but before we make a decision, is an excellent process that I would like to see, um, sometimes with some other issues, so that we get input, hear the feedback, have time to think about it, and it's not even on the table to make a decision tonight, so, in the future, I would like to consider that. I'm done.
Okay. I've just, um, been trying to gather my thoughts, and I, I'd like to echo what everyone else has said tonight, that we really appreciate your coming and spending time with us, um, and I really appreciate your comments. And for example, Timpanore Highway, yeah, we move a lot of traffic down there, and I use it a lot. But at the same time, we really destroyed some neighborhoods on the north side of that road, which were beautiful neighborhoods as you used to come into Highland. And so I think you need to find a balance. And what I heard from people here today is, you know, "We would like to move traffic and stuff, but we don't want our home values decreased. We want the safety of our kids. We want the quality of our life preserved." And putting five-lane roads, don't do that. And so I'm opposed to a five-lane road going north of SR 92. I think it should be an improved three-lane at the most. I think we need, what we heard tonight is, we want sidewalks or a trellis. We want some safety issues. We want to keep the traffic slow. And I'm not sure why we can't work with the high school and the school district and say, "We're going to issue so many parking permits, okay? And you have to park in the school, because there's plenty of parking spots there, not out on the street. If you don't have a parking permit, then you carpool." Because I'm not sure why every kid in northwest Highland and Alpine has to drive a vehicle to high school every day, because we keep spending millions of dollars and not solving the actual problem. And the problem is, is all these kids drive individual cars. So why can't we ever address that, but we'll spend millions of dollars? So, you know, one of the reasons for the east-west corridor south of where I live was to help the high school traffic. We spent $8 million on it. Has it helped the high school traffic? No, because we never look at the root cause. So I don't know how to fix that. It's a cultural thing. But let's look at all alternatives. That's my feeling. And let's look at the high bench road. That would bring some traffic down out of that. And I've heard people say, "Gee, that's an expensive road, but we just spent $8 million on the east-west corridor. Surely we can find, or $10 million on this. Certainly, we can find the money to do that." So that's my opinion. I appreciate your coming. I think we need to balance what our citizens want and what the studies show, instead of just saying, "Oh, we have to follow the studies." So...
Are we ready for a motion?
Sarah, is there anything you'd like to share?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready for a motion.
Are you going to throw the... You're good. So I would make a motion that we continue this item until our next meeting, and in the meantime, we explore the other options of high bench road. And do we want to maybe not specifically say what options, that we would like to explore all the other options that were presented?
So your motion is, to make sure I'm clear, your motion is to move this item, or to continue the item, to the March 15 city council meeting?
Yes, to the March 15 city council meeting, but not to have this same discussion, to have a discussion about then what would be the better options, or if we just want to. Because, am I also correct, I guess I'm going to take back my motion for one second, because the motion is amending the general plan, correct? The motion is not accepting funding?
Yeah, this is only about the general plan.
I'm still not ready to amend the general plan anyway, because I think it opens the door to, it opens the door more to this. So I would like to, I would like to continue the item until our next meeting, and give us time to read the comments and explore other options. So my motion is to continue.
So the motion is to continue this item till March 15?
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Why do we have a deadline on the 15th?
I think that that is the...
Is that the MAG funding? Is that what's driving this?
My understanding is, it is the approval of the general plan amendment for the MAG funding. So if we denied the motion completely, it would be saying that we don't want to try to work with any option there, and have it be funded by MAG.
Well, I like the alternatives. I'm just not sure we have the deadline in two weeks that we're going to...
Andy?
If, so just where you are with funding, if you don't amend the general plan, then we need to withdraw our application to MAG.
But we have one more meeting before that, correct?
We have one more meeting before that.
So we could continue it.
So if it's not, if the motion is not approved by March 17, then MAG will not look at the funding process as part of this next round?
But does that still leave it open that we could have some alternatives on this road? I mean, are you saying that we've got to have the five-lane road or...
My understanding is it would be two years later. It wouldn't be in this next two-year round. You'd kick it out for two more years.
What you do is, yeah, you would withdraw from this funding cycle, and your next opportunity would be in two years. They look at it every two years.
So, just to clarify, so if we wanted, and I'm not saying we do, but if we wanted a nice three-lane road with, you know, a bike lane and a sidewalk on the other side, that would not be an option with this MAG funding? We would have to take the five or nothing?
Well, no, you put forward the, you put forward the project that you want to have MAG consider, in whatever form that project is and wherever that is. Now, what we've, you know, put forward to date is what the study has suggested, which was the five-lane road. My belief is that, you know, if we chose to cut this back a little bit, as we've discussed earlier, to 11-200, you know, and say, "Hey, we want to phase this a little bit lesser. We want to break it up in more chunks. We want to make sure that we're going just far enough or doing just enough." I think that...
Or decrease the scope.
Yeah, or...
Or redesign it, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and if you're redesigning it, you know, and quote-unquote going back to the drawing board, you know, entirely, you know, MAG's going to say, "You know what? Why don't you withdraw your, why don't you withdraw your application and come back in two years?"
Now, my, hold on. My only understanding is, there's no design here. I mean, it's just, they've looked at this as an area that they've seen as a concern, and we put forth a project that we'd like to see if they'll fund, but we have to have it in our general plan, right?
Right. You've got to have it in your general plan. Your general plan's got to support what you're asking for the funds to be. The mayor's correct in that, you know, the process is, you know, right now, what we're putting forward is, you know, has some general parameters to it. And there's a lot of ability between the time that you get the funding and the time that you build the project to vet, you know, the improvements. You know, a number of things have been talked about, with the safety, with the shoulders, et cetera. You know, you can have some time to vet all of that and work through all of that, but, you know, you need to, to some extent, stay at least reasonably consistent with, you know, with what you're putting forward in, you know, so that you're in the framework of a similar project.
So I would like to, I would like to continue the general plan amendment, and then over the next two weeks, I would like us to have some discussions about what that could look like as far as a redesign or lessening the project or whatever. So I don't think that we have time or energy to do that tonight, so I would like to continue the proposed general plan amendment, and then we can figure out what exactly that would mean for us before our next meeting.
Motion, I just want to make sure, is your motion to continue until March 15?
That is my final motion.
That's the motion on the table. Is there a second?
That's my final second.
Oh, second.
Okay. Just, I have Brittany make the first motion, and I have Tim as the second. Is there any discussion before we vote on that? Okay. Is everyone clear on what the motion we're voting on? We're voting on continuing the discussion of amending the transportation plan, and it moves it to March 15.
Okay, so I understand that, and I support it. But I guess the question that sits in my mind is, are we just delaying by two weeks the general plan amendment, which would allow a five-lane road here?
Or what, you guys come back and would, you have to still vote on the, you have to vote on the general plan, so at the time, if you vote on the general plan, if you're amending the general plan, then that's what would happen? Does that make sense?
To me, because Scott, it's just giving us room to explore what it is we would have to do to create...
To accommodate what we're...
To accommodate what we've talked about, and to accommodate, you know, a smaller road, or not this at all. So it's not coming back to consider a five.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, because that's where I stand, so...
Yeah. I mean, but that's not going to be what our motion is, because that's not what, like, that's not what's on our agenda.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, if we can, if you have that motion, this is a motion to continue until March 15.
That is my final motion.
By the way, thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate all your comments. We had 26 of you make comments. Thank you. We will now move on to our next agenda item. We did not get done by 10.
Can we have a break for a minute?
Yeah, let's go ahead. Do you want five or 10 minutes?
Five, yeah, I need to go.
How about a five-minute break? We'll start up at...
Okay.
Let's just, let's just start at 10:30. We'll just start back up at 10:30.
Okay, sounds good.
To me because Scott is just giving us room to explore what it is we would have to do to create to accommodate what we've talked about and to accommodate. You know, a smaller road or not this at all. So it's not coming back to consider a five.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that because that's where I stand, so.
Yeah. I mean, but that's not can be what our motion is because that's not what like that's not what's on our agenda.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, if we can, you have that motion, this is a motion to continue until March fifteenth. We don't see, by the way, we're not seeing any movement on this TV. So. We're still missing, have you done? Oh, we have, we have all all in. That that motion to continue is five zero. By the way, thank you everyone for coming, appreciate all your comments, we had twenty-six of you make comments, thank you. We will now move on to our next agenda item. We did not get done by ten.
Can we have a break for a minute?
Let's go ahead, let's, do you want five or ten minutes?
Five, yeah, I need to go.
How about a five minute break, we'll start start up at.
Okay.
Let's just. Let's just start at ten thirty, we'll just start back up to ten thirty.
Sounds good.
It is ten twenty-nine, we'll plan on starting in one minute.
No, the duck would be, it would actually, the outfield would, the outfield would option their own grass area. There's no way for kids to sit that far to their houses.
We should have got something charged right parking. Have stall.
The great poopa.
We want to welcome everyone back to city council. Well, go ahead, we are now ready to move on to item number six. Which is the resolution voting on participation areas. Nathan, is that who in the staffs could be presenting that?
That would be Erin, here she is.
Mayor and council. Voter participation areas are a fairly new thing required by a state law change. And essentially, it matters for initiatives and referendums. So now, if an initiative or a referendum is filed in our city. Signatures, there was certain, there was a certain, there has always been certain thresholds for signature gathering. But now signatures have to be gathered for eleven and a half percent of the active voters within seventy-five percent of our voter particip- participation areas. Excuse me. If you remember in twenty twenty in December, excuse me, that's supposed to say twenty twenty-one. We, or no, 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 we reaffirmed the twenty twenty areas in December of this year just because our new census data wasn't available yet from the county. So that data has become available, we worked with the county to draw updated voter participation area maps. And the county was really great to work with actually, and we amended the map to allow for growth in Ridgeview because that's really, at least at this point in time, are are the known area that we know where growth is coming. And so we can talk about the numbers if you'd like, but as you can see, essentially, the Ridgeview is, the voter participation area that would include Ridgeview is about fifteen-hundred fewer individuals than the rest of the areas, essentially to account for that growth. Given what we know about the average numbers in Highland number per household, it could actually be up to three thousand people in Ridgeview. However, given the demographic of the community, we do expect it to be slightly smaller than that, but we will have to do this again in ten years and we'll have a better idea of exactly how many people are living there. I know the maps can be hard for the residents to see, I apologize about that, this was included in the packet and we can see, for example, so here's the quadrant that will include Ridgeview. Oops, questions, mayor and council?
We're doing this for ten years, right?
Ten years, so this sets our voter participation areas for the next ten years.
Any questions from council? If there are none, we'd be ready for a motion.
I'll make that motion. So I move that city council approve the resolution creating voter participation areas as required by Utah code twenty-eight dash seven dash forty-four hundred and one point three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Scott, second by Kim. If no other discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Sorry.
We have everyone in? That passes five to zero. We will now move on to item number seven, this is an ordinance. Oh, by the way, I'll tell you why we didn't do number four, the why it didn't, why it had to be continued, is we had the wrong mayor's name and Sarah Peterson's name was not on that resolution, so I assumed we had to continue it anyway. Anyway, as we go forward, we have item number seven, an ordinance to the municipal code change to title six dealing with animals. I believe, is that going to be Brent that's going to be doing that presentation? Brent?
Brent Wallace, the code compliance officer for Highland City.
Brent, will you turn on your microphone?
There's a green light on. Button that says where it says push? Okay, got it. Is that, is that better? I am Brent Wallace, the code compliance officer for Highland City. And I am to blame for this. It was my idea, and I'll think twice before I have any more ideas. A lot of work goes into changing code. But I want to give credit where credit's due, and Kelly's responsible for about eighty percent of this with the editing of the ordinance. And I thank her and Erin for wordsmithing it to make it readable and professional, so thank you. We talked about this exactly a month ago, I had received some complaints from residents about both barking dogs and about breeding, people that were breeding dogs. In the last month? So that was on February first, when we had this, this first meeting. So it's in the next, in this preceding month, we've, you know, cleaned this up and may hopefully make it work. We ended up taking approximately sixty-seven lines of ordinance and replacing it with twelve, so it's been extremely streamlined. Next slide. Did a review of the, some cities that surround Highland and came up with the number of dogs and cats that they permit. And at that time, the city agreed, the council agreed that we would go with three dogs and three cats, so that's how it's been been written. Vaccinations was was very complicated and was not current with current standards, so I contacted three different clinics, I guess, and I'm not sure if the North Utah Valley Animal Shelter is considered a clinic, but they have, they do vaccinations and they recommend vaccination, so. This was updated to be current with current standards and procedures. Allowable numbers, we've talked about before, we've changed that to be three dogs and three cats. Probably the most, the areas that was the most edited was disturbing the peace. And I had contended at that time, people don't necessarily care how many dogs you have, they care about if your dogs are barking. And at that time, we had a very subjective way of determining whether dogs were disturbing the peace, and so what was disturbing the peace to one person might not be equal to the other two. So Councilman Ball, you know, was was voiced concern over being anonymous in when you make claims. And that's the way most, almost all of our claims are is anonymous because they want to, they've got a problem, they don't want also disenfranchised neighbors, and so they prefer to stay anonymous. So the way this is written now, it will take two persons from two separate households to make a complaint. I think that's actually a high bar, because there's a lot of people that just don't want to cause a rift in the neighborhood, but if you do get two people, then that's all that you need, you don't need to have decimal count, you don't need to have hours of the day, it's just two people. Let's see, moving on to the next slide. Any questions at this point about how we're kind of proceeding?
You had up there, they have to get a vaccination at four months, then they have to get another one within one year, one year after.
One year after the four months, so that would be at sixteen months, and then thereafter every three years.
Is that in our current code?
No.
But that's one of the changes is the vaccination.
So we had it at six months, and then it was, it was quite complicated scientifically what the vaccine had to contain in it. So this is the way basically was explained by all three of these different clinics is how they typically do it.
Is that common, as you, have you looked at other city codes, is that common in other city codes to require a vaccination at four months, then sixteen, then three years?
Yes, it's, it's, so I mean, I've had nine dogs in my life and I've bred dogs, and that's typically what I've always done. It used to be vaccination sometimes at one year, but now they've apparently improved the vaccine so that now they can have one every three years.
So I just had a little. So if you have this limit of three dogs or cats. So if you have a litter of puppies, do you get a little time? I mean, what's, if somebody says, oh, look, they just had puppies, they had three puppies, now they've got five dogs. At what point would you investigate or or the people get, would they, do you have four months to kind of take care of their dogs?
That's something that was added late on on the agenda.
Right.
Was up to four months, then they're considered after four months are considered dogs, not pups or not kittens.
Okay.
So they have four months to sell, give away, whatever with those.
Pups and kittens.
And and I might as well cover this right now because it's an important point, they can only have one litter at a time. So they can't have three females and be going out and having a stud dog and have three litters at the same time, they can only have one litter, and this was in an email that was sent this morning, so. Four months and one litter at a time.
Okay, I didn't see the email this morning. I have this pesky day job.
Any other questions? Okay, so.
I have a question on the note, Nathan or Erin, is that and that, did we give the public, is that, was that out to the public to be noticed, I mean, did we have notice situations that need to be met there?
There's no public hearing required for for a municipal code change, and as you know, mayor, we sometimes make edits in in a meeting as it's going, so.
So everybody understands the one litter at a time and four months, okay?
So can I ask one more question?
Yes.
So have, as you've been enforcement officer and you're dealing with some of these issues, because you brought this forth, have you had trouble with people complaining anonymously about people having too many dogs, or is it just the noise?
It was, we had both, we had both, people were breeding dogs and the, and the dogs were causing a noise disturbance, so I actually, that went, it's clear back to October, and that's when I read this ordinance and I couldn't make, I couldn't understand it myself, so I couldn't go and tell them they're breaking, violating code and explain it to why, why, so it's, those envelopes were sat on my desk until this week. This will actually, because it takes two complaints now, those complaints will not be valid unless they can, and someone else comes forward and complains with them.
Okay, I think that's good.
Will you let the first complainant know that, that in order to have it moved forward, they have to have a second complaint? Yes, we try and so, on very rare occasions, we do not know who the the person is, but in all cases, we will respond to them on our website and let them know what the, how it's turned out and the decisions have been made. Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the number of animals.
Uh huh.
And we had talked about that last month, but we had a public comment earlier that made some sense to me, that if you have three huge dogs and three cats, and there's like those big, big cats. Like, no, they're so really huge ones that live in the house.
Tiger queen or something?
Anyway. But then, that, someone could have that in a small apartment space, but somebody couldn't have four little, small breed dogs. And so I thought, oh, that, that, yeah, maybe we need some kind of language in there.
Then we'd have to start weighing dogs.
Well, I don't know what the solution is, but, but I did want to ask the question and bring it up, have we missed the mark here? Have we done it in the spirit that it's intended, is what we really don't want, our nuisance to the neighbors?
So I think that someone with with four, four Yorkies that don't bark and don't mess on other people's yards, they could have six and no one would ever complain, and I only respond to complaints. But if you have one Siberian husky that barks and poops in the neighbor's yards, then that's a problem, even though it's only one dog, and that's addressed actually in here, that's under the nuisance and the disturbance, is that it's against code for them to be relieving themselves on public property or someone else's private property.
And I need you to come to my neighborhood.
So if, remind me, if if it's mostly just complaints on this are going to be based on noise and messiness, why are we having the limited all then? Just to give us a mechanism or what?
So that we've got some way that we, I guess we can respond to a complaint and say, yes, they're allowed to have three dogs. I don't expect that we'll we'll ever get a complaint, and that's just never say never, about the number of dogs, if they're not barking and making a mess and causing a stink.
But we can't just say you can have unlimited dogs and cats as long as they don't make a stink?
If that's what you'd like to do.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just the.
I'm actually an anti.
I'm just the one that responds, I'm not the one that makes the rules.
Well, and I think generally, this is not a bad rule for general health of, you know, ten, ten dogs in one house is usually not the best case for the dogs unless the owner is really on top of things, but. Okay.
I mean, I.
I don't know if anyone else has.
Like I said, it's not the number, it's the noise and the and the odors that are creating. However, in our ordinance, it is stating that if they have more than three dogs, they are breaking the. They would be in violation then, yes. And I believe, oh, there was, there was an exceptions that we needed to probably bring up, and next slide is, we were quite vague on what a service dog was, so now I've looked up with the ADA considers service dogs, and that would be what we would be relying on, and then law enforcement dogs would be exempt from any of these these rules. The hobby breeder, hobby breeder license was eliminated in its entirety, it left a giant loophole, so people could get the license, have five dogs, and never plan on ever breeding them. So that was eliminated in its entirety, and I could not find that in any other city's codes, that was kind of something very unique to our code. See. I think we already covered the litters and. So any, any other questions, anything that I've left out, Kelly? Okay. Any questions? This will make it much plainer and much simpler to explain to our residents and to get them into compliance.
Thank you for working on this and making things simpler, because I think as a whole, when we're in government, we try to make things too complex, so appreciate that.
Thank you. If there's no questions, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Let's see here, I move that the city council accept the findings. And approve their proposed amendment to several sections entitled six animals of the. of the municipal code with the addition of the proposed amendment regarding litters.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kim, second by Scott. Any other discussion? Are we ready to go to vote? Let's go to vote. And that passes. That passes five to zero. That brings us on to our next item, which is item number eight. We had on here number 8A, which is the park building, but I believe that's going to be postponed. It is. Nathan's not here.
Yeah, we're proposing to just postpone that one for a couple of weeks, given the lateness of the hour.
Okay. Anything else needs to come up before we do item number nine? Okay. Item number nine is closed session. Can we get a motion to go to closed session to deal with litigation? Potential litigation?
I move that we move to closed session, but don't have... Oh, yeah, okay. That's all you need.
And we're going to closed session, I guess, to... For imminent litig... Is it for imminent litigation and maybe purchase, exchange of lease, or real property?
Of course, that's what I meant.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Scott, second by Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we're now in closed session. Thank you for everyone that showed up tonight.